All right. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna start off tonight's council meeting with an invocation from Grace Baptist Church. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, as we come to you tonight, we want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. Lord, we thank you for getting our attention today with not any hurt or harm, and grateful that there wasn't a lot of damage with that, but we recognize you tonight. Help us not to take you for granted, and, Lord, the goodness we get to enjoy from day to day. Thank you for the change in the weather. We appreciate, Lord, the coolness and the sunshine and helping to grow things in our community. But we're mindful tonight of all of those that have a part in Corona. Lord, we're mindful of each and every citizen tonight. We pray that you'd watch over, give safety, give health, and, Lord, financial aid to those who need it. Or mindful of those who serve us, first responders and the like, firefighters, police officers. Lord, we pray that you'd keep them safe always in our city. Lord, thank you for the work that they do. We don't want to take them for granted. Say thank you to them tonight. And then, Lord, as we gather together, we pray that you'd help these that have a responsibility, accountability in our city to look over financial things, decisions that they'll make. I pray that you'll give them wisdom, give them discernment. Lord, give them unity in all of their conversations. And, Lord, that anybody that has a part in this meeting tonight, that you'd use them to help us. We sure love you. We thank you for your goodness to us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
What an inspired prayer. Thank you very much. For the Pledge of Allegiance, it's not gonna come as a surprise, but the very qualified and best-ever Mayor's Youth Council is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So if you guys will come forward, don't push the pastor too far out of the way and lead us in the pledge.
Hello, everyone. Please remove any caps and hats. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Hang out right there for a second. Act cool. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to the City Clerk to my left. You can find cards in the back, or the front, or online. And don't leave. And that's it for that. There's a couple revisions to tonight's agenda. Item 20 and 21, the Engineers Reports were revised, for all you nerds out there following that. Item 22, the Staff Report and Engineers Report were revised, again for the nerds. And now we're gonna go into Proclamations. So if the Mayor's Youth Council could come forward, we have all sorts of proclamations for them. And just to let you guys know, we have seniors, juniors, and sophomores. I don't think we have any freshmen on the council, right? But these kids are super smart. I got to spend some time with them here and there, and this evening. One of them's going to Cornell. One of them's gonna be an anteater. I don't agree with that. And then everybody else is going to Harvard and Yale and as such. So with that, I'd like to recognize them. I have no fingernail. Oh, I see what you did here. Abigail? Congratulations. Shreya? Congratulations. I'm gonna murder this name. Gurnar? 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 Sorry. Christopher? Very well-dressed kid. Malori? All right. Chelsea? Adusa? Oh, we got a lot of proud moms here. Shreya? The other Shreya? Michelle? Maria? Caleb? Good job, Caleb. Lane? Oh, I don't know about this next kid. His dad's a rebel, but Pierce himself is a good kid. Father is our city treasurer, and let the record show, he's made our city millions upon millions of dollars. So we let Pierce join us. Does any of you want to speak? Anybody want to say anything? They're all shy, by the way. All right.
It's been an incredible honor and a wonderful opportunity to be here today along with my fellow peers. And I'd like to thank the council so much for this opportunity, for allowing us to be here today. I feel like we've really learned a lot, not only of what we can do, but what this city does for us. And so I've been really grateful for this experience. Thank you.
You guys all rock. You're awesome. You're future leaders, except for this one. And Caleb's gonna take our picture and go from there. Thanks, guys. You can take a seat, and if you need to correct any council members later on tonight, feel free to do so. Okay. I'd like to invite the following individuals to the podium to receive this proclamation. It's Drinking Water Week. So if anybody forgot, this is your week. Chase Michelotti, and I apologize if I murder any names, but don't be surprised. Steve Plummer, that's a good name for drinking water. Aftab Hussein, Raoul Aravallo, Tanner Weber, Marines Lopez, and Joshua Franks. The Mayor's Youth Council can pack a house. All right. Well, obviously, you guys all are very, very qualified. Does anybody, Aftab, do you want to be the speaker on this? Tom wants. Aftab, do you want to be the speaker?
Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you. This is a small part of the team that provides water and sewer services to the residents of Corona every day. So 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we have a number of staff members that are out there providing water and wastewater services, as well as pre-treatment inspections, both in-house and contract staff that are out there making sure that we protect public health. Every time somebody turns on the tap, goes to their refrigerator, gets ice, takes a bath, bathes their babies, and then goes and we discharge that out to the creeks, uses that in their businesses, manufactures something. The men and women in the organization that do that are, I'm just really proud of them. And so as we move into this week, as our drinking water week, it's not just about the water we drink, but about all of the water that we use from the water in our homes, the sewer water that we go down the drain, to the recycled water that we're able to take back and irrigate our landscapes and parks with. And I'm very proud of the men and women in the organization and in the industry that we serve the community as a whole. And I just wanted to take some time and thank them for that service. And again, this is a small part of the organization here in Corona, but they represent a huge family that serves this community 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I'd just like to recognize them and thank them.
And if you've been in Citizens Academy, does everybody know what percentage of water has to be perfect in our city? 100%. It's not 99.9, which was also an option in the test.
The question is, Tom, how many gallons of water?
So annually, we serve 10 billion gallons of water to the citizens of Corona every year. So over 10 billion gallons of water get served at the citizens of Corona every year.
So there you have it. Some of you are taking long showers.
Don't do that.
My wife included. But she's not here, so I can say things like this. So I will leave this proclamation with you. It's safe drinking water. You're the most dressed up. So I want to thank you guys, and if we could get a picture, we'll go from there. All right. Let's see if we can shoot for 11 billion next year. Okay. Up next, National Small Business Week. I would like to invite the owners of our Happy Place Cafe to the podium. Not to be confused with depressed Place Cafe. You look like happy people. So you guys are it. You're the small business. I don't know how many billions of water you use, but with this proclamation, we recognize you guys for small businesses. I have a small business myself, so I know why your hair's falling out, if it's falling out. And I'm not, it's really boring to read. But it's basically, we love you, we appreciate you. Don't ever leave Corona.
We're local. We're staying.
All right. So I will give you this. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, Tom.
Sorry. I'd love to know more about your cafe, please.
Yes. Use the mic. Alexander Salon and Spa. We make all our sauces, soups, pastas, not pastas, but sauces, spreads, all from scratch. Everything's made at order. We're small, but we make bomb food.
Very good.
Tony, do you want some bomb food?
Yeah.
Tony will be going there. I think we should all go there. So all in favor of going to Happy Place, our Happy Place Cafe, raise your hand. All right. You got some new customers? It's gonna be busy tomorrow. Can we get a picture?
Thank you so much.
It's tough working with these mayors up here. All right. We got good water. We have small business. Guess next we need flowers. It's poppy month. I'd like to invite Veronica Garcia, President of the Joe Dominguez, American Legion Auxiliary. Oh, you're there. The whole club, the whole club's coming up. All right. Just want to let you guys know, I wrap this poppy on my microphone every year, and someone steals it. I don't know who. But I'll put it up there, and then they steal it. Flower thieves in this place. So as mayor, want to recommend, recognize Poppy Month? Who wants to be the speaker? Oh, no, go for it. If you don't say something, Tony will. Okay.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Veronica Garcia, and I'm the President of Unit 742, American Legion Auxiliary. I'm here today with Ms. Lucy Reese, who is our chaplain, Julia Alegria, who's our historian, and passing out the poppies is our First Vice, Ms. Jenny Carazosa. So at the end of World War I, the American Legion adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom and the blood sacrificed by troops in war times. The use of the poppy symbolically comes from the poem "In Flanders' Field", which begins, "In Flanders' field, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row", referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned-up earth of newly dug soldiers' graves over parts of Belgium and France. The American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower in 1921, and in 1924, in conjunction with the American Legion, instituted the National Poppy Program to protect the memorial poppy from becoming commercialized by outside interest. Each year, the American Legion's Auxiliary volunteers from more than 8,000 units across the country distribute millions of poppies. Most are handmade in exchange for contributions to assist active-duty military, veterans, and their families. Our American Legion family, oh, excuse me, Congress has designated the Friday before Memorial Day as National Poppy Day. So please wear a red poppy on Friday, May 25, to honor the fallen and support the living who have worn our nation's uniform. Our American Legion family from Post 742 would like to invite all of you and your families to join us on Saturday, May 25, at 9:00 a.m., and assist us in placing flags by the markers of the veterans that are buried here at Sunny Slope Cemetery in Corona. We would also like to invite you to attend our annual Memorial Day service on Monday, May 27, 9:00 a.m., also at Sunny Slope Cemetery. I still run into Corona residents who don't know that Corona has a Memorial Day service. Our post has been hosting this service since 2003. So please come join us and spread the word. Thank you very much.
All right. I hope no one steals my flower this year. Okay. Up next is a proclamation for Childhood Drowning Prevention Month. We'd like to invite Captain Matthew Fortine, Robert Corral, these are all firefighters, Tanaya, maybe not, and Tanaya Goldsmith, the President of the Childhood Drowning Presentation, to come on down to the podium.
Hi there. My name is Tanaya Goldsmith, and I'm the founder and CEO of the Childhood Drowning Prevention Foundation. May is National Water Safety Month. With that in mind, the Childhood Drowning Prevention Foundation and the Corona Fire Department have partnered to make May Childhood Drowning Prevention Month to bring you, our local community, vital information, like what happens when there's a drowning, and who's all involved? Who does that affect, and how can you protect your kids from drowning? We're also gonna have a very special interview with a woman named Amy, who tragically lost her son to drowning. And she's gonna speak about what she went through and how you can help keep your kids safe and in around the water. Lastly, we're gonna have so many amazing pieces of information about water safety and drowning prevention and swim lessons that are gonna be going out the whole month of May. So stay tuned for all the life-saving information that we're gonna be putting out for Childhood Drowning Prevention Month with the Corona Fire Department. And if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to message us or give us a call. We're always here to help. We look forward to seeing you soon.
You're a movie star. I want, let me know if I get this statistic wrong, but on average, a child dies in Riverside County every three months, right? Or in Corona, every three months. It was at the, I heard that statistic, and it just alarmed me. And so anything that can be done to prevent it is just valuable, right? So with that, Tanaya, can you talk for a little bit on it?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Corral. I'm a firefighter-perimedic here at Fire Station 3. We're just doing, we've partnered up with the Childhood Drowning Prevention Foundation, and of course, our main goal is to prevent children from drowning. Kind of like was said, there has been previous drownings in the past. We've taken data from the past six years, and in that six years, there's been a total of 23 childhood drownings. Eight of them, unfortunately, were fatal. The other 15 were sustainable, and they ended up living. But we don't know the current state, and we don't know anything further from that. But in our eyes, that's way too much drowning. That's way too much. It's unfortunate. It's a tragedy that we can prevent. We can do a lot to help out. And this is one of the first steps that we're doing to help out the children in our community. And with that, I'll pass it on to Tanaya.
This campaign is about getting information out to parents that they don't know about protecting their kids. When clients come to us to get their kids to learn how to swim, a lot of the information we give them, they've never heard before. It's brand-new to them. And to us, we know this because we're professionals, but they have no idea. So that's why we're doing this. We want them to have that information readily available so they don't have to go through a tragedy of losing a child to something that is so preventable. And we have a video that we're gonna be sending out in the month of May, where we interview quite a few different firefighters. And all of them say that pretty much all of the calls that they went on were preventable. So we're really excited about this, and we're hoping that all of you that are here tonight, everyone on the City Council, will help us in this campaign and share these videos, share them with your families, share them with your friends, with your coworkers, and help us save lives.
Matt Fortine, President of the Corona Firefighters. I'm just really proud of this collaboration between the city, the fire department, and the association. And thank you to Tanaya and your foundation. And then also thank you to Robert. Robert's a homegrown product here in Corona, graduated from Santiago. We were able to get him back over. He was a firefighter-perimedic elsewhere. We brought him back. Now he's able to not only perform his duties, but do something above and beyond and help with preventing childhood drownings. They're just a terrible thing for our community and just gravely impact everyone that are affected by it. So thank you, Robert, for your efforts here, and thank you to the city for the support.
Feel like I gotta grow a cool mustache now to hang out with you guys. Tanaya, can I give this to you? And I think everybody knows, education is the silver bullet to solving drowning, right? So thank you, thank you, thank you for educating, and I hope you save many lives. Can we clap for him again? Tell him the Santiago principle if you leave. All right. Give me a minute. Okay. Just to let everybody know, Jackie, or Councilmember Casillas, she's on Zoom. And she would normally be here, but she has a baby, and she's a good mom, and that's where she's at. So we'll wake her up if anything important comes along. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards for the public recognitions?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Meeting minutes.
So moved.
All right, all right. Well, are there any speakers on meeting minutes, Sylvia?
Mayor, we do not have any speakers for meeting minutes.
Okay, then we can vote away.
Councilmember Casillas, can I please get your voice vote?
She might be asleep.
She's not asleep. Listen, what are you talking about? She hasn't slept in days. What are you talking about?
She says yes. She said aye. Okay, well, sorry, Jackie abstained. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the City Council. A council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Just a heads up. Item 21, Councilmember Casillas is going to recuse herself. And item number 22, Councilmember Speak is going to recuse himself. Would any of my colleagues like to poll? Polling, 13? Wesley?
I think my only option is I want to vote no on number 10. So I think I have to poll it to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, we would have to take it separate because it's a legislative, it's a second reading, so we would have to do that separate.
So number 10.
Okay. Jim? Jackie?
I did get a text message from Councilmember Casillas. Her screen is still frozen, but she has nothing to poll.
Okay, and I have nothing as well. Are there any public polls?
Yes, I have one speaker card for agenda, item number 13.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Councilmember Casillas? Vice Mayor Steiner, your vote.
He's sleeping. Okay, 5-0. All right. Wesley, number 10, the floor is yours.
I don't have any comments other than that I don't support it, so.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards for number 10?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this agenda item.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move.
All right, Wes, you did good. Item number 13, Tony pulled it. Tony, the floor is yours.
I think there was also a member of the public that polled number 13. They can go first if they like.
Okay. Joe, are you the puller? Or, Don, sorry. Don, come on down.
Puller, I'm a resident here. This is the old car salesman in me speaking. I saw this item for a couple new trucks. First, I thought their price was a little high, then I see how they have to be outfitted. So that's, that's fine. I'm sure they need a lot of equipment. I don't have a deal with that. But what did puzzle me is why you have to buy them in Texas. I'm fairly sure there are Chevrolet dealerships in the state of California, probably some in Riverside County. That was all. I just wondered why you have to go to Texas to buy these things.
Jacob, who would you like to answer that?
I'm going to ask our fleet manager to speak to that one, if he knows the answer, or we can call on somebody else if not.
Hello, yes, I don't know the answer specifically. I might ask Chief Young.
Over to you, Chief.
Yeah, it's pursuant to our cooperative purchasing agreements. So when we establish, or we take part in a cooperative purchasing agreement, it has vendors that agreed to a set price, and that's how we get those breaks on the total pricing. So they deal with volume. So they, in order to make their money, they look at trying to provide as many customers as possible. So if you look at the consolidated purchase programs, a lot of times they're in other states. And they have a variety of vendors that are part of that consortium.
Okay, that's fine. I just wondered why. Thank you very much.
That's what I thought it was. Tony?
Yeah, I was just curious. These are replacing two vehicles, I'm assuming. And are we going to get them in a timely manner?
So it's a great question. And that's one of the reasons why we're moving forward with them right now. If you saw one of the mileage on one of the vehicles was not significantly out of line, but it did meet the minimum criteria for replacement. But we're looking at a 12- to 18-month lead time by the time they get here and arrive that we can put them in service. A perfect example is we took delivery today of a Type III engine that was ordered in October of 2020. So it's just, it's, even though we hear that supply chain is an excuse, it still continues to be a reality.
I guess I just have, my last question is just have a little consternation. I'm a Ford guy, so we got to go with a Chevy?
We actually told them that they could be anything, Chevy, GMC, or Ford.
All right, I guess. Thanks, Chief. With that, I'll move.
Are there any other speaker cards, or was that it?
We do not have any more speaker cards.
No Ford guys out there. Okay, let's vote. I know this was a big deal for Jackie. Or not. She's kicking chairs right now. Okay, communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note, the state law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments. Anybody can speak, but Maddie has to go first. Oh, that's not, that is Maddie.
Hi, Maddie, and I'm a 32-year resident of Corona. The first thing, I'm grateful to be here after being sick for so long, so I have to catch up. The first thing, if she can show that, is I wanted to thank the Public Works Director for the no-turn-on red, the really cool signal that they have that lights up. It's at East Grand, at Fullerton, and 8th, because people run it all the time, and that's the coolest thing around, so thank you for that. Second thing, thank you to the fire department. I had a little incident a couple weeks ago, and thank you very much for helping me out on that one. The third thing is, I might want to talk about RSO again. I just got hit with a 10% rate increase. I signed a 20-something-year lease that they could only do it every three to seven years. Excuse me, my rent could only go up 3% to 7% every year. And there's a little clause embedded that says every five years, they get to review, and they can do fair market value, 10% raise. The last thing I have to say, time permitting, if I could see what's going on. I saw the presentation about City Park at Home last week, or last meeting, and something just didn't feel right about it. It seemed like we're trying to satisfy everybody, and I just kind of wonder at what cost we're doing this. Is our sales tax going to skyrocket? And we're just going to start charging for every little thing to try to get the money back? The second thing is, the messes involved. As we all know, McKinley's a little bit of a mess. We still have our mess at Sixth Street Northeast corner and Southeast corner of Sixth and Main. Don't see a whole lot happening there. So it's like, are we trying to compete with Orange County all of a sudden to try to bring all these people in to Corona, change our image? I frequent Orange County at least once a week, and I go to the packing house, the lab, at the anti-mall, the camp, and I feel like we're trying to get Corona all here in just a relatively short time. Get all of Orange County to Corona. And the last but not least, I heard my mom in my ear saying constantly, "You have to finish a project before you start something." It sounds like we're going to start so many projects. We already have traffic issues, whatever. And I'm just a little concerned that we're trying to grow so much so fast. That's all I have to say. Thank you for giving me time to say what I needed to.
All right, thank you, Maddie.
First off, I fill out the cards. I want to thank Savat, because the Alamo tract at River and Lincoln is getting the streets done. And they're all very happy about it. It's been a long time. And it did happen at lightning speed. I mean, he went out there and saw it, and then shuffled stuff around and got it done, you know? And Tony was a big part of that, too, because he came out and saw it. And I just, that doesn't happen, it doesn't happen enough. It does happen more now than it used to. But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't happen enough where you just see something, you go, "That's got to get fixed," and then it's getting fixed. And I just, I just wanted to, I wanted to pay tribute to that. So I just wanted to, I want to acknowledge that was going on. Thank you, Savat. Thank you, Tony. You know, from my status as a former resident of General Drive. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Savat. Thank you, Tony. Okay, Sylvia, anybody else?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
All right, nobody's on Zoom?
We do not have somebody on Zoom, but Councilmember Casillas is back on Zoom.
Okay, it's always good to have her around.
Mayor, if I could, really quick. You know what I think is really cool about what Mr. Morgan was just talking about is, is, you know, we've all seen like re-slurrying, and they're grinding up that street. I don't want to talk out of turn as far as the technical term, but I drove by there. My son goes to school right there, and I drive through that track just to kind of check on things. And they had this huge machine that was just eating up the asphalt or concrete or whatever it was. And not only is it getting done, but it's getting done the right way, right? We're not slapping a slurry coat over it and trying to put a Band-Aid on it. It's like a full deal. So, and I know I'm not articulating it well, but thank you, Savat, because I know that the other day, it was, it looks like the whole track was ground up and ready for the next step of the process. So I know that those residents are going to be... It always reminds me of that scene in the movie Cars. And for those of you that have kids, who probably have watched it eight million times like I have, where the street gets done, and then they're all out there kind of dancing on it. And so I know that when that project is done, it's going to be really nice. And we probably won't have bad words written by our names on the signs for the Public Works, in that neighborhood at least. So thank you again, Joe, for highlighting it, and for Savat to get that done. I know the neighbors are, the residents of that track are really excited about that, so thank you.
Very cool. There will be parties in the street. Okay, public hearings. This portion of the agenda is advertised as public hearings. The first is the number 25, Specific Plan Amendment 2023-001 to the El Cerrito Specific Plan, SP 91-2, Section 12.8, to allow educational schools in the Commercial C District by a conditional use permit applicant River Springs Charter Schools. Do any council members want to report on this? Tony does? Okay. Joanne Coletta, the Planning and Development Director, is going to light us up.
Yeah, so this is a specific plan amendment, as you mentioned, and it's really a simple request, so not much change to the specific plan itself. The applicant, which is a River Springs Charter School, is requesting to add educational schools to the permitted land uses list in the Commercial District. And in addition to that, it would be allowed by a conditional use permit. So that's really all the extent of the specific plan amendment, is adding that land use to the specific plan and by a conditional use permit. And I'm here to answer any questions.
So I do have some questions, Mayor. So I watched the Planning Commission on this, and a lot of my concerns just, I just didn't get them really satisfactory answered. You know, this is a, this is a commercial zone. It was always zone commercial, it was always intended to be commercial. And I have some heartache over the addition of the school that's going to be here, specifically a couple things. One, their playground, or the perceived playground that they're proposing, proposed playground. I've gotten off on that exit a couple of times on Ontario, off of the 15 freeway. And that proposed playground is going to be at the bottom of the embankment that if a car comes off that, off that exit ramp too hot, it's going to go right into that playground. So I have some concerns over that because the barrier doesn't extend. There's a, there's a gap in the barrier. And if a car goes off the freeway, it's going to go right down into that playground. Number one. Number two, I've talked to both of the businesses there. There's a tire shop and the paint store. And they have some concern about the drop-off traffic. And I did watch the traffic plan that they have proposed and the circulation. And speaking as a parent that drops their child off at school every day, the problem with drop-off and pickup is always the parents. You know, people that decide that they want to pull in when they want to pull in and pull out when they want to pull out. And I'm concerned that the businesses there that chose to open their businesses in a business district are going to be negatively impacted by the amount of traffic that's going to be there. I know that that paint store, they have a boom in traffic from their customers that are coming between 6:00 and 8:30 in the morning because that's when their customers are coming to load up and go about their business. And then in the evening, a lot of customers come back, or, you know, late afternoon customers come back around the same time that pickup is going to be, and they're picking up paint and supplies for the next day as well. And they're the ones that are going to be most impacted. They're at 2163. The tire shop is further south. But I can imagine that parents, being parents, are going to, you know, I'm going to pull into the tire shop and drive around and circumvent because I'm five minutes late and I don't really care about the rules. And I see that day in and day out, you know, dropping my own child off at school. So I have a lot of concerns, not only about the safety where the playground is, the traffic, I don't think is mitigated as well as it should. And then on top of it, you know, there seem to be some inconsistencies with the application. They're going to, they're saying that they only have, you know, less than 600 students that are going to be there on a day-to-day basis, but they've got a 40,000-square-foot building. So it seems to me that they could scale up very quickly, and that's going to add more traffic. So, you know, this is, they're asking for a conditional use permit to go put a school in a Commercial District that was never intended for it. Never intended for the amount of traffic at the two heaviest hours, drop-off and pickup. And I just don't see this as a good project, and I've got some concerns over this.
I have just a couple of comments. I watched both of the meetings, and I appreciate the, when they, the school came back with clarifications. I know that the Planning Commission had a lot of really great questions. You guys were able to answer a lot of the questions. I have some similar concerns, and the only one I want to voice just because I have personal experience with the River Springs School. My office in Riverside was adjacent to a River Springs School on the corner of Chicago and Third. And River Springs was a horrible, horrible tenant. They were a horrible neighbor. I almost hit children trying to park my car in the morning, block the driveway every single afternoon, and I had to go to the city. single, every single afternoon, and I had to go to the city repeatedly to get change, even though staff would come out and try and shoo people away. But the problem is, it's like a, you know, I think Councilman Daddario kind of explained it pretty well. It's a swarm, and it's hard to stop. So I'm, I too am worried about the impacts. And so my question is, what are, if we approve this, what can we do after the fact? Because the city of Riverside had a hard time getting, you know, making any changes other than, you know, keep asking them to come out. And they finally, we moved. My company moved our offices because things wouldn't get better. In fact, the new owner of the facility actually had to fence it off, because people were coming and parking, they didn't want to wait in the drive line because it was too long. So they figured if they parked in the driveway, and their kids got out and ran across the parking lot while, you know, people were coming in, trying to park, including myself, it was a nightmare. And it was, it was, in fact, it was one of the main reasons we moved. So I just want to know, if we approve this, if we find out that things don't go as presented, you know, is there recourse for us? And I know that, I think the principal or somebody had come up and said that they had never had an issue, and I tell you, I lived through it for three years. Was not a pleasant experience.
So with it being a conditional use permit, we of course have conditions on the permit itself, because there may be something unique about the use. So we also look at a conditional use permit to make sure that it, you know, provides compatibility, and it still works in harmony with the other land uses. I cannot sit here and tell you about the site layout of every River Springs Charter School, because I think they're all different. And we do have charter schools that are in other commercial zones. That's just the where they are located. This particular site, when the Planning Commission looked at it, it is a little bit different. And so the queue lane capacity is probably more unique than at other locations. But that was a heavy topic of discussion by the Planning Commission at both meetings. So we did evaluate that heavily. And they also had a supplemental plan, should they have to come back and provide additional queuing in the future. This is their primary plan right here. And this is the queue lane that can have up to 48 vehicles. But if some case, they had to go out there, rearrange, and redirect cars, they were then able to come back and provide an additional 20 spaces, to have a total of 68 cars stacked up if they needed to. So they went through the whole queuing analysis. Drop-off is a lot easier, according to them, it's faster, it's quicker, they get it done within about 10 minutes. And then the pickup is usually double the time, somewhere between 15 to 20 minutes. But you're not stagnant that whole time. The cars are still moving through the queue, and that they have to stay in the queue. They cannot cut through traffic, which is why they have the cones and the barricades and the monitoring. So they did come up with two alternative plans if they needed to. If there is some hazard that's created in the future, then we have to come back and evaluate the CUP. We would have to go through that process and give them time to cure it. And if they don't, there is a revocation process. And you're right, it's not a simple process, but there is a process. And we come back as the city and document our evidence as to why we need to revoke the permit.
I mean, and I, like I said, I watched both meetings. The queuing looks great. I, I can see it, and I can see that there will be cars backed up on Compton. I know that's not ideal, but there is parking there, there is room, and I don't see a driveway that's gonna get cut off like it happened at my location. However, I do see a flaw. And, because it happened to me, people are gonna park in front of Sherman Williams. They will park there. And they will park their kids, because they don't want to have, and this is exactly, I would get in the shouting matches in the parking lot with people, and saying, "Why are you parking in this parking lot? You're not allowed to park here. Why are you parking here?" And the person would say, "I gotta be at work in 15 minutes, and I can't wait in that line." So they would take up all the parking spaces, and employees would get pissed off and drive home, and say, "You know what, I'm not coming in." And so I, cones are great, people aren't gonna drive through the cones, but what they're gonna do is they're gonna fill up all those parking spaces, and they're gonna park there, and their kids are gonna walk in. And that was the issue, because then you're gonna have people that are traversing that parking lot, you're gonna have kids that are running out. And like I said, the only reason why I, I've had the personal experience, so I just want to, you know, if there's something that we can put in there that, that if, if they are observed, I mean, granted, I'm feeling that they'll do a good job in trying to maintain and keep people under control. What I don't want is that we're gonna change a use that's gonna impact on an existing business.
So, yeah, I go to Home Depot probably three or four times a week, and I usually take the Compton exit out of there. And what I have noticed is, it's, it's not a busy street, now. So I was looking at it even today, I was like, "God, I think this would be fine." And then, but Mr. Daddario, your points are well taken with the, with the barrier along the playground on the back. Having been a former firefighter in Corona, I've been on a lot of cars off the freeway. And so my question is, is there an ability to improve the barrier behind the playground to keep the kids safer?
If you would like to open the public hearing, we do have the superintendent or the facilities maintenance that they can come up and speak to that.
Okay. Can we, can we go to Jackie real quick first? Jackie, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. I, you know, I didn't see a real problem with the application, but I hear the concerns, especially the valid concerns about the impact to the businesses and its original intent. And so I would like to hear from the supervisor, from the superintendent, and, and consider how it is that they plan to avoid that.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. With that, I think there's wisdom in opening the public hearing, so the superintendent can come up and talk to us. Or superintendents.
Hello. I'm Dr. Kathleen Hermsmeyer. I am the superintendent of Springs Charter Schools, River Springs also. And I have my facility personnel, traffic engineer also. I'm very sorry to hear about your experience at the Chicago location. One thing that's different about the Chicago location is it's very short stacking. There's hardly any stacking there compared to here. This, this is really a lot of stacking. And the, and the, although some parents do come early, the parents, a lot of them come all throughout the whole, the whole 15 to 20-minute maneuver. So you don't get a lot of, we don't believe we'll get much, if any, blowback onto Compton. But our traffic engineer is here to discuss. So he put the green section there, but then the blue is the secondary. But there is a third, which we could go through the area where the playground will be, and open those gates, and do that also. That would give us a lot more stacking as well. But it's, it's, it's a similar program. I mean, all of our, all of our schools... It has a two-day homeschool learning center. So those students come, there's a different group coming two days a week, and another group coming three days a week. And so, but, and this, and like I said, the stacking is less optimal there. And this is gonna be a lot better. In addition, we are absolutely happy to look into whatever we can do to increase the safety of the, that area, that corner. It is the entrance, not the exit. So I do think, you know, it's, I don't know, I really don't know what the very best thing to do would be, but we have, our facility guy is here, our director of facilities, who can discuss that also. Whatever else you want to hear, we're, we're happy, we're, we definitely work with the city. Our parents understand that we are not, we do not have eminent domain, we have to get approved by the city, we have to be good neighbors, and they can't continue to be part of our program if they are going to do shenanigans like parking and the Sherman Williams, and walking their kids through all that traffic. Not only is it bad for Sherman Williams, but it would be very bad for safety for our students to be walking through a bunch of cars. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't have it.
My name's David Black. I'm the Senior Director of Facilities here at Springs Charter School. And we've gone to lengths to try to make this a safe area for the kids. In fact, that's actually one of the reasons we like this site, is because we're, you know, aware of the many different things that could possibly happen, you know, with shootings and things. We like to try to make it where we are using our buildings to be able to keep the kids safe, away from the general public. And we know that the elevation is higher there, and I understand your concern with the off-ramp there. But if it was to be made a condition of approval, that we improve that to satisfaction to Public Works or Transportation Department, that would be fine. One thing that's different on this presentation that you see in front of you is, one of the things that came up was that we wanted to put a larger play area, and so it required building a masonry wall. And to be able to dig into the side of that slope to provide more area for our students to be able to recreate there. And so we're gonna be building that wall, and one thing that probably might be a solution to your concerns is to make that wall higher, that masonry wall higher and stronger, to be able to withstand something like that, or to do something more guard railing on the off-ramp. So we're not opposed to anything that would, you'd like to put as a condition of approval, and make it to where it's approved by the city.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, maybe some sort of a concrete K-rail before you get to the heavy-duty wall, just to slow it down?
Yeah, that's something I think our traffic engineer and our structural engineers can come up with something that's... Also, I did personally visit the two sites that the businesses there, the paint and the tire store. And I talked to the managers there. I've been, I went there to each one of them twice. I went over to Home Depot and to Sam's Club and talked to their people. And everybody I talked to told me they were really excited about us coming into the neighborhood. And didn't give us any concerns. I showed them the queuing that you have up there right now, and how it'd work, and now we would not, they have their own private driveway, and our staff, and we can make sure that we do exactly what your concern is, to have those cones, and actually a staff member standing out there and not letting people go over into that area to park. So that is a, some of the problems that you've experienced at the Chicago site, probably could have been corrected with better staff training and stuff, too. So we'll be aware of that from the get-go here on this facility.
So, just to be realistic about it, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but if a car's coming off of that on-ramp, or off of that off-ramp hot, and they miss that, or they go in that opening, your wall isn't gonna stop a 3,000-pound car going downhill at a high rate of speed for a hill of beans. So for me, this, I don't believe that that off-ramp is a city off-ramp. I think that you would have to work with probably Caltrans or Transportation to figure out a way to shore that up, to stop a car. And even, even that K-rail, or, or the type of barrier that they have is like wood pylons and then a metal rail. So I don't know what that's called.
You have the concrete barriers.
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know if that would stop a car, is what I'm saying.
There actually isn't a...
Slow it down before you got to the ramp.
There actually is no, no barrier there.
Yeah, so, no, there's a barrier that starts...
Starts right there.
Yeah, yeah, it's just...
Comes in like that.
That's the part, there's a, he's looking at a map, and there's an opening where, at the bottom of that opening is where the proposed playground is going. So, and all due respect, the story that I got when I spoke to the tenants was a little bit different. So there are, they expressed to me concerns about, about, about losing parking spots and losing out on their customers getting because of queuing. And I know that you guys have your grades separated, but you guys open your doors at 8:10. And I speak from experience, if your doors are open at 8:10, and my kid's in fifth grade, and I've got to be at work at 8:30, I'm dropping him off at 8:10. So, you know, I would like to see, you know, some solutions on the, on the guard rail off of the off-ramp. I'd like to see, you know, some verbiage in a contract with your parents that says you get one warning of parking in Sherman Williams parking lot, and then you're removed from the school. I'd like to see that before, before this conditional use comes back. And I, I couldn't approve it today, me personally. So I'd like to see a little bit more thought around that. And then, you know, I'm trying to think of everything that I can to mitigate the challenges. You know, I'm concerned about people going northbound on Compton, dropping their kid off in the, on the street, and them crossing in the middle of the street. Parents do crazy things when it comes to dropping off their kids in the morning, and I see it every single day. So as, as it stands, I couldn't feel good about approving this until I see some, a little bit more forethought in the mitigation of some of those concerns that I have.
I'd like to address that if I could. We do have an apparent agreement. That specific language is not in there, so we could make an amendment to that agreement to satisfy that concern as well. But I think that was on the original presentation from staff by Eva Choi to the Planning Commissioners. That was a topic of discussion as well.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you could add that and bring it back to us, then sure, I would be happy to take a look at it. But that's, that's only one of my concerns, right? And so, and it's very specific verbiage. If you park at Sherman Williams, and you walk your child to our school, you get one warning, and then you're dismissed. So I, I mean, for me, those businesses were there, they bought into a business district with never a forethought of a school going in there, and the challenges that they would face if a school does. So I would like to see that verbiage, and I'd like to figure out how we can get some security from the off-ramp, or safety off from the off-ramp, to help mitigate a car going down that embankment and right into the playground.
Good evening. My name is Justin Ross, and I'm the traffic engineer. I prepared the analysis. I'm gonna try and answer your questions. So your concerns are very valid. The area you're talking about, when you're coming off the off-ramp, the freeway, there, we have a picture, but I don't know how quickly I could find it. That off-ramp is quite a distance to the, probably the right-of-way edge of Caltrans, where you have your barrier. And that's, that's also called a recovery zone. So if you drift off of the road, you have an area to recover. But you're absolutely right. A catastrophe could happen, and a car could go through there, it can go through where the Sherman Williams paint is, or it can go further north. Things could happen. But there are barriers. Onto your other concerns and points, the graphics I have before you, the one on the left, we looked at four or five different queuing options. This CUP, if things aren't working, they're gonna do what they can, not can, but will make things work. This is one where they would absolutely avoid the shared driveway, which is actually owned by the building that River Springs is going into. It's not owned by Sherman Williams. So they're permitting Sherman Williams to continue to use that driveway. So here's a scenario where they would absolutely not use that. They would have their agreement with the parents specifying where they have to go in and out of. And then, lastly, with the Sherman Williams, when I collected data, I collected, the most was 20 vehicles in one hour, in and out, and that was at 10:00 AM. At 7:00, there was eight, four in, four out. At 8:00, there was the same, eight vehicles, four in, four out. The next hour, there was 10. The next highest was at 10 o'clock with 20. Then it went to 14, 14 the hour thereafter, 16, 15, 15, 6, and 9. These are very low volumes.
Sir, I think you're missing the point. We're not talking about the volume, that they're gonna block people from parking. My issue is, from real experience, the parents park there, drop their kids off, one person comes in and doesn't see a kid, you know, jutting out from a car, and gets hit. That's my, that's my concern. That's my concern. I know you can't talk about it as an engineer, but it's because it's a behavior issue. It's a behavioral issue and I understand. And your numbers make sense. I think the queuing is fine for the cars. You're right. And even if it gets into the street, it's still not going to disturb anything. I have no issues with the queuing. My issue is with parents that are going to try and take shortcuts and no matter what you do engineering-wise, you're not going to fix that.
True, but that's why they have the procedural, the agreements, and I'll let them speak to that.
And as I said, because we're a charter school, we make sure that our parents understand that we are only existing in each city by the goodwill of the city approvals. And in almost every case, we have to get a conditional use permit in order to operate in every place we have. We have 21 locations and we have conditional use permits in probably 18 of the 21. So, we work with the parents to make them understand that they have to toe the line. It's not the same in a traditional district school because they don't have that kind of, I don't know. The city doesn't have as much say over where a traditional school, district school goes and how people operate. Charter school, the people sign up for it, they understand that they're choosing a different choice and that they have to follow the rules. So, I do think we absolutely could modify our MOU with the parents and make that clear and put those kinds of restrict, you know, specific rules on there, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, like I said, my concerns are that there's perceived danger from the off-ramp there. And you have to work with Caltrans to see what you could do with them to... That's their freeway. It's not our freeway. To see what you could do to mitigate that. And I want to see the verbiage before I can approve this that says that you're going to, you know, be as very hard as you can on the parents. Because you're right, you know, from a traditional school like where I take my son for Corona Noco Unified, that's their school and the city can't say a whole lot. But I can say a whole lot about this. So, you know, the proof to me is in the pudding. And all due respect to you, you know, for the traffic engineer, you were paid by the school district or by the school. You weren't paid by the city to do this. So, your numbers skew towards them. You made it work for them. And maybe if you open it up and you go all the way around the building, that might solve some of the issues. But Councilmember Speak is correct. It's the parents that you can't plan for and control. And so, let's figure this out upfront and that's where I'm at. So, thank you.
May I, real quick, this might be a question for Mr. Campu Jacob, but with Caltrans or RCTC needing to cooperate on improving some sort of, or allowing some barriers on their property, what are our challenges with that? And I know Caltrans historically hasn't been super friendly with some of our desires.
They have an encroachment permit process, so it is possible for them to apply for that encroachment and propose some type of barriers. So, I used to work for the encroachment permit process, so it is doable.
So, there's a chance then that we could approve this tonight, but they could go to Caltrans and Caltrans could say, "Thanks, but no thanks." And then, we haven't solved our problem or made it safer. That's what I'd be worried about. Is that a reasonable concern?
There is that possibility. Yeah, I can't speak for Caltrans.
I'm ready to support this, but I think that, you know, Councilmember DeDaro brings up a very good point specifically with the safety near the backside of the school where the playground is. There's, look, there's going to be, there's potentials for shootings, stuff at every school. You're right, the parents are out of control at every school. That's just a reality. But I think that it's, I think it would be good for us to know whether you even have a chance on making the rear of the property any safer.
One other option we were just talking about is moving the playground further away from that corner. We liked it in that back corner because it's furthest away from the public and we like that. But we could move it down either direction. We could move it like up at the top. We could put it down towards the street or down further, you know, away from more where the actual freeway is as opposed to the off-ramp. So, that's another option.
Maybe that's a backup plan then if Caltrans or RCTC says no.
Right. So, we're happy to...
Also, we could put it on our property where we don't have to necessarily work with the Department of Transportation or Caltrans. That would be an option for us because if I remember correctly, our property line actually goes all the way up that slope. You know exactly where the exchange is?
Yeah, it's the top of the slope.
Yeah, so we could do our own K-rail in that area as well.
So, I guess I would just want to see what that would look like, like before we said yes for sure. That's where I'm at.
Jackie, do you have anything to say?
Oh, my goodness, I thought I froze again. Yes, Mr. Rayner, thank you. You know, what I think is important is, you know, I don't want to hold this school to any different standard than any other school. And we don't have a jurisdiction over other schools, right? We just have the jurisdiction over these charter schools that are applying for these conditional use permit. And again, the thing that is a concern for me is what this does to the other businesses who did not go into business thinking that they would be neighbors with another school. So, you know, I hear the concerns about safety and it sounds like there are alternatives that are within the school's authority to execute, which would probably be easier than going through Caltrans. So, I think that's wonderful, but that's not really where my concern lies. It's with, you know, the impact on the businesses because that's the thing that we can actually, do we have jurisdiction over? It's just a conditional use. And so, you know, I think that if they can insert, if the applicant can insert that verbiage into their agreement with parents and there can be a proactive, you know, monitoring and controlling of the parking and driving situation of parents in the drop-off, then that is enough for me to support this project because, again, I don't want to hold them to a different standard and I don't want to go outside of our scope. So, that's how I... Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. I have a couple of questions. The first is for Joanne. The process, just to play devil's advocate, all chaos breaks out, the school opens and parking's a nightmare. What is the revocation process for a CUP?
It's similar. You basically have to come back through the public hearing process and we have to present our case before the planning commission. And they also have a right to come up and also present their case. So, we do have to go through a documentation process in why we're pulling the permit and explaining why they probably haven't held up to their conditions of approval. And so, it is a process. We've done it once before, a long time ago in the city, and it's kind of like a little trial per se, like you're in a courtroom and then we just go through that process.
And does it go to the council or just the planning commission?
It just goes to the planning commission. I believe they can appeal. If they wanted to appeal, the planning commission's decision, that would go to city council, but it is the planning commission.
Okay. And then, for you guys, this is like a TI for you, right? Is it first floor and second floor? Is it the whole building, three floors?
Yeah, it's quite a bit of TI.
Okay. So, if, well, just devil's advocate, if all chaos broke out, would you be able to break your lease if your CUP got pulled or what would be the process there?
That ship sailed a long time ago, Mayor.
We've been doing this for a year. We've been in this process.
Yeah, so, our plan is in five more years to be able to purchase the building. So, we would own the building and so that would be ours. If something were to happen, then we'd end up having to sell the building.
Are you paying rent now?
Yes.
Are you paying rent? Okay.
Yeah, we've been working on this for over a year, probably over a year.
Yeah.
We had six months free rent.
Our application was in November of '23.
So, you're fighting a clock. Okay. Go ahead.
Excuse me, '22, I'm sorry.
This is probably for Joanne Jacob. So, how does this work? So, you've heard all of our concerns, you know, can we make the back area safer for the kids? Sherman Williams, can we do something in the MOU? Can all this be put as a condition of approval for you to make sure that they do so we can vote on this tonight? Or do we have to say, we have to wait for them to come back and show us exactly what happened when they spoke with Caltrans or RCTC? And so, how does that process work?
So, you can always add these as conditions of approval. The request on the CUP tonight, because you're reviewing it in conjunction with the SPA, you do have the ability to add conditions of approval to the CUP this evening if you like, and we can be very specific on what that language may be. And if there's still not enough information for you, you can always ask for a continuance. But we can add that to the conditions of approval, absolutely. It's no different than how the planning commission operates. When they have discussions with the applicant in the public hearing and they decide that they want to add more conditions, they direct us to add those conditions and that's exactly what we do.
So, I guess I would ask my colleagues if you have stated your concern and what language you want them to say or you want what actions they've taken to make the back safer. If we've, I think there's like three things, three or four things. Is it clear enough to give that to Joanne so we can vote on this or no?
For me, no. I would like to, I don't think that it's very clear for me. I'd like for them to come back to us with our concerns and figure out what it is that they can and can't do in order to make this move forward. I want to see the verbiage that they put in. I want to know that they're taking it very seriously in conjunction with their neighbors and with the traffic mitigation there. I want to know what their plan is to figure out the safety in the back part. I mean, I think for me, I don't want to lock them into specific things. I want them to come back with and address our concerns. That's the way I would prefer to see it. I mean, this all could have been mitigated had they reached out to us six months ago and said, "Hey, this is what we're doing." Right? So, they took the lease on the building and with the hopes or that they would be able to get a permit, we didn't tell them to do that. That was what they chose to do, so.
And all due respect, like I said, we've been working on this for over a year. We've gone through, with the city. We've gone through lots of staff changes with our planners and back and forth with different strategies. We've been working with them for a long time. And so, I mean, we've been doing everything that we can from the very beginning. We had to first be able to get through the planning commissioner's approval to be able to come before you, so.
All due respect, sir, we've been here for four or five, we've been here for four years. And this is the first time that we're able to express our concerns. Had you guys come to us and just said, "Hey, this is what we're planning," I would have told you exactly what my concerns are.
Well, I had a, we scheduled a pre-planning meeting and met with all the, with all staff.
With staff, and I can appreciate that, but...
They advised us on this strategy to take, so.
I can understand they're going through the process.
Yeah, Jim, I'll address my, I think, I looked at the area, I looked at Google Earth and put a dot on the off-ramp. They'd have to go through a gully and up a hill to do that. It would have to be going pretty darn fast. The odds of that happening are probably pretty low, assuming that they have some kind of mitigation that they could work on, you know, that either they can't get something through Caltrans to extend, at least extend the, you know, maybe just 100 feet or so to divert someone off of there. I think that would be fine. I'm okay with that. I would like some kind of language that, you know, no parking is allowed in that parking lot adjacent. And that would be, you know, they put in the CUP that if Sherman Williams had, you know, I don't know, we'll pick a number, three complaints in a quarter or, you know, five complaints in a quarter, that you guys have to come in and explain yourselves.
No, that's understandable. And just for your information, we do have other sites where we've asked the city, can we pay at our expense and put some signage in? No school parking and stuff like that? So, we've done that before.
I lived it. You can tell me, you can make any promise again, but I'm telling you, just as Councilmember DeDaro said, parents literally have, you know, just about, they don't care. Their time, it's trying to get in, they're trying to beat whatever they're going to park, wherever they want to park. And frankly, we would have great response in the beginning of the school year. There'd be, you know, people out there and staff, and then somebody would call in sick and then there's nobody out there. Then me and my staffer were trying to like figure stuff out, how to get places to park. So, as long as that's in there, because I know from my standpoint, reaching out to the city, even though I was complaining every single day for weeks and it took them, and they said, "Sorry, it's not in the CUP." We'll talk to them. Yeah, we'll talk to them. And then, you know, PD would come out and issue tickets and that created even more drama. And so, I want to avoid all that for these folks and give you another, you know, tick that you can use to keep parents in line. But if, I'm okay with that language. I think the odds of somebody coming off the freeway right there are pretty slim. And if you look at the differentiation between where the road is and its berm that goes up, if you look, like I said, you drop a pin on the Google Earth, you can, it'd be pretty tough to do. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the reason they make a little berm. I mean, it's a drainage there. It would have to be something pretty specific. So, I'm okay with that. Like I said, I'm more concerned about the local residents or local business there.
Okay. If you guys don't mind, can we open it up to the rest of the citizens?
Maddy Paxton, District 1. And please forgive me for having to say this, but I think we all can agree we're living in a very crazy world right now. Things we wouldn't have thought about years ago and my head went someplace that probably shouldn't have, but I want to go on record now just to be sure because we've got kids involved. That off-ramp, the way I understand the playground to be, what is it going to take if we have some crazy shooter standing there with a gun, pulling over to the side, those kids are sitting ducks on that playground? And I don't see that in any of the other schools that we have here where we've got such a situation that, I'm sorry, I pray to God that I'm totally wrong, but you never know today. So, I just want to add that. Not happy with the plan.
Maddy, I'll just jump in real quick. There's one on the end of my street that I could stand in the middle of the street and mow down all the kindergartners in the playground. I mean, it's just, it's just the flaw of the designs.
The human flaw.
The human flaw, yeah.
And I get that, but we didn't, at that time that we built it, we didn't think that the situation would be today. Now, we are aware of it, so why are we allowing it to happen?
The districts, the district, the school district is responsible for that, right?
Yeah, but the thing also is that's, I know which school you're talking about because my daughter went there. It's still a private street. How much traffic goes on that street versus...
It's Oak Avenue. It's not a private street.
I understand. And like I said, I'm praying I'm wrong, but God help me if something happens. I just want to bring that up. So, I just had to say what I needed to say for the record. Thank you for letting me say that.
Thanks, Maddy. Don?
About 25 lifetimes ago, I was a school teacher, so I've been around what goes on when school lets out and when people are showing up for school. But perhaps more importantly, I've spent a fair amount of time in the right-front seats of cars that are driven by a wide variety of people. And I have seen people do some really, really stupid stuff, even when... And I have seen people do some really, really stupid stuff, even when I was in the car with them. And, and so they are entirely unpredictable, even when somebody's watching them. So my feeling is, based upon my experience with driving behaviors, because I, I've watched a lot of driving behaviors, done it for a living at times. And my support goes with Mr. Speak and Mr. Dodario. Their, their concerns are entirely well-founded, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Richards as well. You absolutely need to err on the side of caution. This is nothing against, for, against the school. I'm sure they're a fine operation, but you absolutely need to err on the side of caution. It is really prudent to be careful. All it takes is one goofball parent that's late, that's running behind, that's thinking about the person they're divorcing or is late for work and the guy's going to fire him or whatever else is on their mind. All it takes is one. And so it is entirely prudent to err on the side of caution. So I back up all the people that have been cautious about that. Thank you, Mr. Dodario, Mr. Speak, Mr. Richards, Mr. Steiner, for your concerns. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Welcome.
Thank you, Council. While I want to pay respect to everyone and their concerns, let's remember that we also have the opportunity to provide something to a group of boys and girls, young men and women upcoming, that can be monumental in their lives. We have the opportunity to make a difference. I do, I understand and I see all the challenges and I understand your concerns. But please, please do not lose sight of the fact that we are here to provide a service, an education, a port in the storm to some of those, many of those kids, all of those kids, who may not have the best educational experience where they are. I'm not speaking against any schools. Everybody does a wonderful job, but it doesn't fit everyone. Our goal is to provide an opportunity for those students that need somebody to work on their behalf when they don't know what it is that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
First, first off, so I watched both, I was at both the meetings. And, and I don't think I've seen an applicant that came in with an application that was such a hot mess to begin with, that dialed it in to what the Planning Commission asked them to in such a short period of time. I mean, so you say that for what, I've seen a lot of applicants. I've seen a lot of stuff get kind of turned back for improvements. And I think they did. I think they, they, they did everything that was asked of them. They cut the, the number, they shot for some high number, and the Planning Commission said, yeah, I don't think so. And then they dialed it back. They were going to close the other location, then they're like, okay, we're going to keep the other location open. You know, and there was a lot of, there's a lot of water under that, under the bridge. There was a lot of, you know, anyways, a lot of adjustments. I, I, look, I think some of their, I, I think probably this traffic engineer, probably more straightforward than any of them that I've seen in the Planning Commission. I've seen a lot of them that I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust them if they said it was daylight outside. This guy seemed pretty straightforward, you know, from, from whatever I know of, of traffic engineers. But I do, you know, I, I kind of would like to address the, the off-ramp deal. The, the actual playground, if you move it, it's probably in the best place right now. The playground is right there, right by the, just adjacent to the sign. You'd have to, you'd have to thread a pretty tight needle to get to that playground up the hill. It'd be something out of, you know, a pretty spectacular deal with a lot of velocity. And knowing what I know about mass and speed and velocity and inertia and all that kind of stuff, I don't think it's going to get there, but, you know, things, stranger things have happened. You know, as I started looking at the, looking at the off-ramp and the topography, I mean, you're going to have to go up a hill straight next to that sign to get to that place. If they move it farther down, you actually have a better shot. If you move it farther to the street, maybe that could, but then that jacks with the whole parking deal. So, you know, they, they did make a lot of concessions. I think some of the stuff is kind of pie in the sky as far as, well, yeah, nobody's going to cut through the shopping center. I know I cut through the shopping center all the time, but, shh, don't tell anybody. But, but as far as the, you know, the people going out, and they were talking about the number of U-turns that were going to happen at that little U-turn and that people are going to cut across. I think when it's three or four lanes to cut across after it gets widened, I don't think that's going to happen. So basically, a good chunk of that traffic is going to make a U-turn in California, you know? But, you know, where do you draw that line between adding more hoops or just saying, well, no? You know, I, I, I take your point that they didn't, they didn't reach out to you, but I'm not sure that they really knew to reach out. I wish you were at the Planning Commission meeting, because I do remember you talking about that when it came to the charter school on Main Street. I do definitely remember that. I was like, oh, yeah. So anyway, so, I don't know. I, I think they did a decent job, so thank you.
Okay, Sylvia, are there any more speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
All right, so I think I'm gonna, are there any? Let me try to sum this up, and then you guys can throw that off the rails.
Mayor, mayor, sorry, you do need to close the public hearing.
Oh, it's closed. Sylvia says, none of you can speak ever again. So Tony's, Tony's a no until they bring some stuff back. Wes is adaptable to language being put in. Jim's adaptable to language being put in. I'm adaptable to language being put in. Jackie, are you adaptable to language being put in?
I am.
Okay. And so then, if I understand correctly, the language that needs to be put in is maybe a second look at the, the off-ramp possibilities of just for safety purposes. And if there's nothing that can be done, at least someone took a good, hard look at it just to make sure. And I agree with everybody that safety is always number one, and I think you guys agree with that. Number two is, what was number two? Yeah, I think Councilmember Dodario does make some really valid points, that Sherwin-Williams is a, is a paint business. That just myself being in the construction trades, those guys there are early and, and your prime hours are their prime hours as well. So if some language can be put into that, and, and we'll bring it by the Dodario approval when it comes back. And was there a third?
I think that was it.
Okay. And then just to go on record, so you guys know, if, if you guys end up being knuckleheads, we're going to revoke your CUP, and we're not going to feel bad about it. So with that, I, I think I've covered the bases. Can I get a motion with those?
Just to clarification, I, I think saying them to try to do something isn't really a direction. So I'm okay with if, you know, that, I, I think Joe said it better than I, I did, that I think that the odds of something happening in that corner, that corner is most likely the best space. I'm okay with leaving that, that part out.
I am too. I just want them to take a look at it. So if, if it's build a wall and put thicker rebar in it or fill the cells or?
Yeah, staff needs, I think, a little more.
Or have Savat look at it, whatever it is, just, just a second look.
I think, I think staff needs to know whether or not that's acceptable or not. I'm guessing not, but. And then I think for the one that I really wanted was the, that they have language in their, in their student agreement that, that parking is not allowed in that area. And if, if there is complaints more than three and a quarter, that they have to come and talk to, to staff about how they, how they're going to correct that.
Okay, so the first item before you is the specific plan amendment. It's the second item that we can definitely add these conditions of approval. So I just want to make sure they get on the right application for you. And I can assist you with some language, listening to you, and we can see if that is appropriate for you when we get to the CUP.
Okay, so move for approval for this item.
I second. You have to read it, Wes.
See, that sign is flawed on this. I think I have the right one, yes. Introduced by Title, Title Only and Way Full Reading of Consideration Ordinance Number 3396, First Reading of the Ordinance Approving the Amendment to the El Cerrito Specific Plan, SP 91-02, to Allow Educational Schools in the Commercial District as a Conditional Permitted Use, SPA 2023-001.
Okay. Make your vote.
Councilmember Casillas, can I please have your voice, voice vote?
Yes.
All right, four to one. Okay, number 26, Conditional Use Permit, 2023-17, to Establish a Charter School Within Existing 44,800 Square Feet Commercial Building Located at Compton in the Commercial C District of the El Cerrito Specific Plan. It's the same applicant, River Springs Charter School. I think we've beat the horse to death, so Jo, oh, I, I need to ask Ms. Edwards. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, it's closed. You guys can't speak anymore. Joanne, did you want to take a crack shot at the language?
Okay. So I believe we want to add a condition to the fact that if the applicant shall be responsible for monitoring the traffic circulation and queue line during the drop-off and pickup of students to prevent parking and circulation impacts and obstacles to the two businesses that share access with the project site, the applicant shall assist to mitigate circulation concerns expressed by the businesses in the shared parking lot. And if the city receives more than three complaints within a quarter from the businesses within this site, then staff and the applicant shall come back together and work on mitigating those problems. The other one that I have is that you would just like the applicant to evaluate the need for an additional safety barrier, if necessary, along the easterly property line of the playground. And then the applicant shall provide in its memorandum of understanding to the parents that they will not park in the parking spaces of the adjacent businesses. And if the parents violate this rule, their child can be, I'm going to use the word expelled. If that's not correct, I can use a different one from the school.
You're a good speaker, Joanne. All right, Tony, do you want to add comments to that or?
Yeah, there's a couple of problems with that. It's will be expelled, not shall be, will be expelled. And I don't want them to just look at traffic or barrier mitigation. I want something to be done. I'm not going to be on record as saying, well, it's a very small chance it's something that could happen. Because if it does, I want to be on record as saying, I don't like the safety plan as it is, because weird stuff happens in cars all the time. We have a 30-year veteran of the fire department that could probably say, I've seen some things that happen with cars that I never thought were possible. And so just looking at it means that, well, we went up there and looked at it. Nope, not, not good enough for me. I want some safety barriers put into place. They said that they even have, their property line goes up, and if they need to, they could put K-rails up there themselves. If they can't get Caltrans to do anything or approval from Caltrans, to me, I'm 100% on record as saying that there needs to be some safety mitigation from the off-ramp. So looking at it means nothing to me.
Okay.
I looked at it, no good, can't do anything.
All right, Wes, you, are you, you're good? Jim?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you're right, Tony. But Joanne is going to work with them. That Joanne knows, I think, very clearly how we feel and Savat as well. And I believe that they will really evaluate that based on our concerns and take the necessary actions to, I bet you a dollar they'll come back and say, we can't do anything.
That's exactly what's going to happen.
Okay, all right, I'll bet you a dollar.
All right.
Okay.
All right. And you're, you're on record, though, as saying that you're okay.
Right, I have faith in our staff. They're going to work with them to ensure the kids are safe.
But they're looking at and they're evaluating, right? It doesn't, we're not forcing them to do something.
So an appropriate thing to do at this point would be to make a motion. And if that carries, then it'll be included. And if it doesn't, then it doesn't get included.
I'll make the motion as, as Ms. Clydes presented.
I'll make the motion as Ms. Clydes presented it.
Okay. Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Casillas, can I please get your voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, four one. All right. We're having a night. Number, number 27, Specific Plan Amendment, 2023-06, to the North Main Street Specific Plan to Permit Building Materials Sales with Indoor/Outdoor Storage in the Transit Commercial District, applicant Daniel Delaney Gonal Lumber. But I think this has been continued to May 15th, 2024. I think that's all I need to say, right?
Mayor, you need to open the public hearing and leave it open.
All right, the public hearing is now open. Does anybody want to speak? You're good, Joe? Okay. Public hearing's now closed, and that went faster than it?
I'm sorry, the public hearing needs to remain open. You can't close it because the item is being continued to May 15th.
All right, it's, it's still open. The item is being continued to the City Council Meeting of May 15th, 2024. Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, Administrative Reports. Number 28, Fiscal Year 2024 Quarter Three Budget Update and Strategic Plan Progress Report. Amina Mears, Assistant to the City Manager, and Julie Kinnecutt, a Dodario favorite, Budget Manager, will present this item. Employee of the Year.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have before you the Quarter Three Report for Fiscal Year 2024. We will start off with the General Fund, which includes the General Fund, Measure X Fund, Historic Civic Center Fund, Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. We're looking at a net increase of 8.9 million or 4.1% when comparing the current budget to where we think we will end the fiscal year. This is based on the information presented at the Spring Financial Workshop and some changes that have occurred since that time. After working with our sales tax consultant, HDL, we are projecting an increase of $2.9 million or 5.4% in the General Fund sales tax and a decrease of $2.1 million or 4.8% in the Measure X Fund. This is due to the current quarterly trend activity and a shift in consumer behavior. This is a transactional tax, so it does not apply to all transactions. And the decline in Measure X tax revenue is primarily based on lower business industrial purchases, resident auto sales, and a decreased gasoline expenditures. HDL is predicting a slight recovery in fiscal year 25. For other revenue, there is an estimated increase of 3.6%. The increase comes from several donation accounts, the Fair Share Development Agreement, and special district admin reimbursements. For current services category, we are projecting an increase of 13%. This includes items such as animal adoption fees, special fire inspections, third-party plan check, and passport processing. There is an estimated increase of 5.2% or $3.1 million in property tax. And we are estimating a decrease of roughly 2.2 in other taxes, and the decrease comes from the collection of cannabis tax. This table shows you a more detailed version of the information discussed on the previous slide. The cumulative budget column shows the current budget, and the projected column shows where we anticipate to end fiscal year 24. It gives you both the change in dollars and the percent change for each of the categories. And again, it is between the current budget and the projected revenues by fiscal year end. As you can see, the projection shows an overall increase of 4.1% or $8.9 million. Now, taking a look at the Quarter Three actuels as compared to the fiscal year projections, through the end of March, the fiscal year is 75% complete, and 70.1, 71.8% of the projected revenues have been received. Due to the timing on some items, not everything follows the regular trend. Sales tax and Measure X are a little bit behind the 75% trend because there's always a quarter lag on that information. Adjusting for the bookkeeping or GASB entries, a total of 69.4% has been received. This is a snapshot of General Fund sales tax. We will cover Measure X on the next slide. You can see the totals for fiscal year 23 on the left. And with two full quarters received in fiscal year 2024, the current total is just over $30 million. The current receipts are 1.6% higher than at the same time last fiscal year. Down at the bottom, we have updated our projected estimate. So you can see we have received 53.3% of the estimated revenue. 53.3% of the estimated revenue. This is the same layout for Measure X Fund. The totals from 2023 are on the left, two full quarters from 2024 on the right, and at $22 million, we are up by 1.8% over the prior fiscal year, and we have received 52.7% of that estimated revenue.
Ms. Kennicott?
Yes, sir.
We are, we are up-
I have the same concern.
Over previous year? Is that what you just said?
From this time, over the previous year.
But right here, both of these quarters show that we're below versus previous year. Am I?
Yeah, I read it the same way.
So fiscal year 2023, July to September, 11, 4, 4, 2, same timeframe for this year, 10,754. That's, you just said that we're up?
Yes, no, you're correct. I do see that discrepancy on here, so I will look into it, but from what is stated on this slide, you are correct.
So which number, so these numbers are incorrect?
No, these numbers are correct, so the statement of that we are higher than last year is incorrect.
So we are lower than last year?
That is correct, yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Okay. And there's a reason, other than just say, I mean, sales tax is down?
Yeah, so just the consumer trend at this point.
Interesting.
You had said something earlier about gas sales being lower. I'm just wondering if that's indicative of gas prices being so high that people can't afford to buy gas?
It's generally been the other way around. When prices went up, the taxes went up and we made more money.
Yeah.
I mean, it's true.
Sorry.
That's what happened last time, right? I mean, the last time the prices spiked, we saw a spike, but remember, this is a lag.
Okay.
But I am curious about that.
I can reach out to HDL, that is who we received the update and information from, and I can get some more explanation.
I'm also very interested to know how far below our projections the cannabis taxes.
It's because the vice mayor was on vacation.
Uh.
Moving on to the general fund outflows, the cumulative budget is 251.2 million, and 49.5% of the budget has been spent so far. We like to show anything with a variance of 10%, so here we have highlighted departments that have spent less than 65%. And I'll move on to the next slide where it is more detailed. Hitting some of the highlights with that 10% variance, capital improvement and O&M projects is below the trend due to the multi-year projects. City manager's office is below the trend primarily due to contractual services related to the homeless program. There are some billing delays due to a contract amendment that was recently approved and retroactive to January of 2024. Debt service is lower due to timing of when payments are made, generally November and May. Economic development is trending low due to materials and supplies and contractual obligations. General govern, I'm sorry, yeah, general government is trending low due to materials and supplies. Insurance premiums are reconciled and recorded at year end. Information technology, this is only the general fund portion, which is Measure X for that department. They have one position budgeted there and some projects. They're showing 19.4% spent, and that is because of some of the projects have not started yet as of quarter three. Planning and development and public works is trending a little low due to materials and supplies and contractual services. In this slide, we highlight the four general fund reserves. Emergency contingency is equal to three months of operating expenditures adjusted at the end of each fiscal year. Budget balancing has been in place for 20 years, but in fiscal year 2022, since fiscal year 2022, we no longer add any new money to this reserve. The pension stabilization is the part of the city's pension management plan. These funds can only be used to fund pension-related costs. The amount has been updated to reflect the fiscal year 2024 contribution that was made in February. Measure X reserves each fiscal year, unspent Measure X funds that don't roll into the next fiscal year will go into the reserve. The reserve amount will be discussed with council each year through the budget cycle. Moving on to the utilities funds, this is a list of each of the, each fund within the utilities. Overall, the fiscal year 2024 projections show revenues are increasing by 6.8% or 10 million collectively compared to the cumulative budget. Some of the highlights on the inflows, looking at the funds individually, electric is increasing by 2.4%, largely due to reimbursed expenses for inspection, plan check, rental lease income, and electric sales. Water is seeing the largest increase of 10.4% or $9.4 million. The increase is primarily due to federal grant revenue. Lastly, sewer is also seeing an increase by just over $100,000, and this is due to interest on investments.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kennicott, could you go back one slide?
Mm-hmm.
In the water utility, where it shows that fees, permits, fines, penalties, and forfeitures are going down, for the fines, penalties, and forfeitures, is that a, I'm just trying to understand, is that a good thing, meaning?
I think so.
Meaning, we're not having to fine people as much because people are adhering to water usage rates or amounts, or?
Paying their bills.
Or they're paying their bills, or, I want to say that's a good thing, but I want verification that that's a good thing.
That's a good thing. We don't want people to have to pay fines, penalties, or shut off fees, or anything like that.
That's great.
We like that. We like people when they, it's best when everyone's paying their bills. That's a great thing.
Okay. And then the fees and permits, that's just, there's just not a whole lot of people that are?
It's really timing with development, and that will fluctuate periodically, and that will go up and down. Those are projections that we make with the budget cycle, but really, that's timing with development.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a snapshot of the cumulative budget compared to the projected estimate. It is up by 6.8% or $10 million, as discussed on the previous slide. It is just broken out differently for you. Here, we're looking at the projected estimate as compared to the actuals through quarter three. We are at 62.4% of actuals received. Taking a look back at last year, we were at 72% received, which means we are down by 9.6%, but that is largely due to the one-time settlement that we have spoken about in previous Taking a look at some highlights of the outflows, they are at 36.4% of the budget that has been spent. You can see for each of the categories, electric, water, and sewer, that the CIP budget spent is trending low, and again, that's because of the multi-year projects, so the expenditures don't follow the trend with the quarterly reporting. The negative amount is for electric, I'm sorry, the negative amount for electric CIP is due to an accounting correction, where an item was expensed out of a project, but it should have been recorded to a deposit account. Looking at the 10% variance, the savings in electric is across the board in contractual, materials and supplies, personnel services, and utilities. And for water, the savings is in materials and supplies. This snapshot is the cumulative budget to actuals information, very similar to the previous slide, but it is shown by fund type and department. Overall, outflows in the utilities compared to the cumulative budget at quarter three is 36.4%. Lastly, the utilities funds target reserves are set at 90 days. To build the target reserve amount, the utilities department shall annually contribute 10% of the difference between actual operating revenues and actual operating expenses for each of the funds at the beginning of each fiscal year until the target reserve is met. And with that, I will take any other questions, or I will pass it on to Ms. Mears for her portion.
All right, Tony, Wes?
All good.
Jim? Jackie, in Jackieland?
Thank you, Ms. Kennicott.
Okay, Amina, the floor is yours.
Okay, so good evening, Council. I'll be going to the strategic plan implementation progress report for fiscal year 24, quarter three. As we all know, the plan consists of one vision, one purpose, six value statements, six goals, 21 objectives, 138 strategic actions, and 125 performance indicators and milestone measures, some of which I will highlight tonight. So we're all familiar with our vision, the plan's purpose, the plan's six values, which reflects our operating philosophy, and the six goals that guide the plan's activities. So moving on to the progress report for fiscal year 24, quarter three, which covers the months of January to March of 2024, the metrics that I will cover in the next slides can be found on the Invisio dashboard, which can be accessed through the city's website. As a quick reminder of the color wheel that you see at the top corner of the screen, any projects in green are projects that are on track, any projects in gray are projects that are completed, projects in orange haven't been started, and projects in yellow are underway. So for financial stability, in quarter three, there are three projects on track, one project with work underway, and one project that has been completed. Regarding any projects underway, we continue to pursue a AAA geo-bond credit rating for the S and P and Moody's and Fitch rating. As far as projects on track, we continue to utilize the strategic plan to guide financial decisions, as well as increasing the percentage of services funded. And then we have one financial project that was completed in quarter three, which is reviewing revenue sources on a regular basis to ensure a balanced allocation of revenue sources. Just want to point out that for this goal, all of the projects have either been started, but many of them have been completed. So this is a snapshot of our financial stability performance, which again, you can find on the Invisio dashboard. The metrics are a year-over-year comparison, and this financial report includes data on our bond ratings, credit ratings, outstanding debt, and more. Most of the items listed here are trending positively, while some items have remained the same as fiscal year 23 this quarter. So moving along to strong economy, in quarter three, we have two projects underway, which includes reviewing and updating the city's purchasing process. If we all remember, proposed changes were presented to the city council at the Spring Financial Workshop. Staff is working on municipal co-updates and process changes, which are estimated to be completed by the end of summer this year. We are also on track with reviewing and updating the city's historic building guidelines and exploring the establishment of a historic building ordinance. A tentative hearing date on a draft ordinance is slated for July of this year. And then lastly, we have completed two projects in quarter three for strong economy. So we have a couple of metrics for a strong economy that are trending the same as the year before. However, we feel like this is still good, because they're at 100%. Overall, our position for a strong economy is positive. So moving along to sound infrastructure, in quarter three, we have one project with work underway, one project that is on track, and two projects that were completed, and one project that has not been started. Regarding projects that are on track, as it pertains to the traffic cameras project, the design phase is on track. We have two projects that are completed, which is the GIS inventory of all utility infrastructure, and the other one being the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which has been adopted and approved by city council. We're glad to know that projects have been entered into Questica, and everything is underway for this project. Last but not least, we do have one project that hasn't been started, which is the multimodal transportation plan for traffic improvements, and that's because it's slated for fiscal year 26. So moving on to our sound infrastructure data, in this report, we see metrics for PCI rating, notably how the residents think that we are doing with our recreational items such as bike lanes, walking paths, and parks. Most of the items here are indicating positive changes from fiscal year 23. For safe community, in quarter three, we have three projects that are on track and two completed projects. We are happy to finally announce that our city's 911 system upgrade project is now on track. We just conducted pre-migration testing of systems and softwares, which was conducted on April 17. We continue to promote community involvement in identifying hazards. Our plan, our local hazard mitigation plan is awaiting approval from FEMA. And then we also continue efforts to implement the city's homeless strategic plan. And then also, a couple of months ago, the city helped coordinate the Vista Dorada grand opening celebration. This celebration highlighted the successful transition of 52 Corona-streaked homeless to permanent supportive housing.
Ms. Mears, really quick, could we pause really quick right here? The upgrade and maintain the city's 911 system to ensure reliable emergency response, is that, is that also part of the fire separation to Ontario?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
As I was mentioning, we've completed our public awareness of local hazards and risk initiatives, as we now have a new alert and warning system in place. And then we also have new county-wide evacuation software, and then rounding out this highlight, we continue to host events that put preparedness at the forefront. We do have a cert field day scheduled for June 22 of this year coming up. So as you can see, for safe community, most of the measures has trended positively for quarter three, and if you access the full report on Invisio, you'll see that some metrics have stayed relatively similar to fiscal year 23 around this time. For sense of place, in quarter three, we have four projects on track and one with work underway. Some of the items that we do have on track includes updating the Mills Act landmark list, which has a tentative hearing on ordinance changes in July of this year. For our volunteer-led hikes, the community services department continues to grow the guided hike program. We actually just hosted one this past Saturday. And we also continue to work on making enhancements to the online enrollment system. Recreation Services is now accepting park shelter permits online. Lastly, we are working to develop an implementation plan for ADA improvements to city facilities. So these are sense of place metrics for quarter three indicators, which includes metrics such as residents rating Corona as a place to live or to raise children, just to name a couple. And as a reminder, note we see that the recreation attendance reflects a significant decline from fiscal year 23 to quarter, fiscal year 23, quarter three, to this fiscal year quarter. And this is due to a new reporting method, cutting some of the over-reporting we were seeing in different program areas. So we're going to probably be seeing this inflation for a minute. For high-performing government, in quarter three, we have two completed projects, one project on track and two projects with work underway. With work underway, we have received and evaluated RFPs to replace the Enterprise Resource Planning System. The top three candidates have presented their demos to city staff, and we are currently in the process of final scoring. For the personnel policies projects, policies were identified, so our next step is developing and implementing revisions. And then we are also on track with developing annual department work plans based on the strategic plan in the city's budget. And as it pertains to the employee mentoring program, the program has been implemented, and we are currently hosting the first round of the program. So the high-performing performance metrics include data for social media impressions, employee turnover rate, and community survey results, just to name a few. And as you can see, resident survey responses displayed here trended positively for this quarter.
Before we move on really quick, I just want to commend the entire staff. That employee turnover rate is absolutely incredible. I mean, it really is, and I think that that goes to, even though it went up a little bit, it's still amazing. I mean, absolutely amazing. You're seeing in the private sector, 10%, 12%. And other cities, I talked to a friend in another city, and they were telling their numbers were over at 10%. Great job.
Thank you. So this is an overall snapshot of where we are in the completion of the plan's goals and projects for the five-year plan, which spans again from 2021 to 2026. Fiscal year 24, quarter three, finished at 79%. So now we will take a look at our operational performance for this fiscal year, quarter three. Also, the data presented in the next slides are also a year-over-year comparison as So looking at community services, we'd just like to note that one of the things that we continue to see an increase in is our dollar rider applications from seniors, and this is due to the free fare program for senior students and persons with disability. For comparison, last year this time, we had 10,000 riders, and this year, we have a little over 11,500 riders. Also, for quarter three around this time this year, tends to be a slower season for city-hosted special events, and this is attributed to us focusing and supporting resident and co-sponsorship groups, as well as preparing for the summer season. But still, attendance at special events has increased by 100 participants from the previous year, and that's because of the addition of the programming done at the HCC, the Historic Civic Center. Under the Homeless Solutions Program, housing placements were significantly increased this quarter. We went up from five last quarter to 56 this quarter, so that's 56 permanent housing placements. And this is part and due to original, excuse me, due to additional grant funding allocated to both the CityNet and Mercy House agreements.
Sorry, can we go back really, really quick? Sorry, can we go back really, really quick? I just wanted to point something out. I saw a post and I think Councilmember Dodario liked it and shared it as well, but our, our partners at CityNet had mentioned that from folks entering the program at the Harrison Shelter to exiting, it was 52 days, 53 days? What was it, 38 days? 38 days?
Average length of stay is 30.
Yeah, average length is 38 days. That's amazing, absolutely amazing. Tells you that we're hitting on all cylinders and want to say congratulations to, to everybody that, that, you know, helps pull that program along and push that program along. So thank you all so much.
I think the other metric, I think the other metric that I wanted to mention, the same post, was that 92% of all participants are linked into coordinated entry, either matched with housing resource or about to be matched. So, you know, hats off to, to Mrs. Roper for, for, you know, designing a, a system that is completely wrapped around. And, and some of these, some of these numbers get lost and, and I'm glad that you paused on it because I wanted to as well. You know, this was a big commitment from, for our city and from this council and, and these numbers show that it's working and that having the full continuum of care, the full wraparound services and all the other words that we, that we have learned over the last four years, this is a big deal. And this is why this program is highlighted all throughout the state as being the, obviously the crown jewel. So hats off to our homeless strategic plan and our homeless director over there who does a wonderful job tirelessly. So thank you very much, Ms. Roper.
All right, so for community engagement, these are our numbers for quarter three. One thing to note for community engagement, the number of people that saw our social media content, i.e. impressions, was over 4.6 million. And all the communication team continues to offer stellar support to all of our departments. See Click Fix, the Parks Maintenance Program continues to fulfill these requests and tickets and identify areas known as hotspots for graffiti or service requests. As a result, graffiti tickets have decreased from fiscal year 23, Q3, from 269 to 231, and the amount graffiti removed was reduced by 15,000 square feet.
Ms. Mears, do we know how we're doing with that 70, is it 72 hours turnaround for the graffiti? Are we still hitting that target?
Yes, we are, Councilmember Casillas. We typically are able to respond and remove the graffiti within the three-day threshold that we set.
Thank you.
Okay, so next are the numbers for the Office of Economic Development. During this quarter, the city partnered with the Corona Chamber of Commerce on three events, including a new business reception, a veterans business webinar and the healthcare workshop. New businesses increased from 270 to 279, which is an increase from the fiscal year to 23, quarter three. Businesses assisted, supported and promoted increased from 45 in fiscal year 23 to 63 this quarter. Staff also secured three additional live work Corona hire local pledges, bringing the total number of pledges to 23. New pledge companies include Carbon Health, Community Access Network and Dart Container Corporation. So for planning and development, Development Services is now fully staffed, which has made a big difference with our on-time and average turnaround numbers. There was also an increase in planning services applications process going from 339 in fiscal year 23, quarter three, to 410 this quarter. So for public safety, we want to highlight the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Team. Their staff has allocated a lot of time this quarter towards the implementation of a new NPDS permit, which is a tri-county effort with Riverside, San Bernardino and Orange Counties and the State Water Resource Control Board. But there will be additional permit details as we anticipate its adoption between October through December of this year. The NPDS crew is a three-member team and most of their inspections are conducted by two staff members. Moving on to public safety's numbers, on the fire side, the total cost for service decreased as well as the number of specific fire calls. However, the number of medical calls and the number of fire inspections increased. Specifically, fire inspections increased from 252 in fiscal year 23, quarter three, to 377 this quarter. On the public, excuse me, on the police side, our response team goal of under five minutes is the highest percentage since we've tracked this data at 44%. And our response time of four minutes and 44 seconds to 90% of priority one calls has improved compared to fiscal year 23, quarter three. So utilities, this quarter received about 9,000 calls for service and our utility call center is keeping our average speed of answer time under 70 seconds. There was only one power outage this quarter and it was only 1.2 minutes and both measures were down from this prior fiscal year. Finishing up with our internal support operations, there was an increase in voices process, a little bit over 6,600 in fiscal year 23, quarter three, to almost 7,000 this quarter. While, while reviewing this slide, while reviewing this slide, I'd like to note that the IT department was awarded the 2024 CIO 100 Award. The CIO 100 Award celebrates 100 organizations and the teams within them that are using IT in innovative ways to deliver business value, whether by creating competitive advantage, optimizing business processes, enabling growth or improving relationships with customers, and is acknowledged market enterprise excellence. And additionally, purchasing continues to improve processes by streamlining procedures. This concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amina.
Ms. Mears, on the, sorry.
No, it's all you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. On the purchasing on the bids issued, what was that compared to last year this time?
I don't have that number in front of me. Councilmember, I'll likely get that to you tomorrow.
Well, I'm just wondering if we're trending, if you know off the top of your head if we're producing, if we've issued more bids or fewer, and if we've executed more contracts or fewer.
I can defer to the breadth.
Any idea?
We're going to pull that up and we'll, we'll find that for you and get it back to you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Ellis, I think this might be a question for Chief Young, but remind me again, when did we throw the switch to Ontario?
January.
No, the soft launch was the end of December.
Okay. I'm just, I, I would have liked to have seen a report on it, but I don't know what the, what timeframe that you're looking for before you can report back on just how it's going. I mean, I haven't heard anything bad, which is good, but just looking to see how well it's going. And I, I know that there, I'm sure that there must have been some challenges upfront, but we're, we're working through those, I'm sure. So at what point do we get that reported out on?
Yeah, we did, we just like to have a larger data set, obviously, at least six months. I mean, in an ideal world, it's a year. We already did preliminary numbers and we know that it is, is exceeding our expectations. Just as a business practice, we, we knew it would because of the difference in, in the two industries, but we will bring back a formal report absolutely.
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Casillas, we do have the information on the bids issue. You wanted to know what were the numbers for fiscal year 23 at this time, correct?
Yes, please, thank you.
So this time, last year was 14 and this year, at this time, we're at 21.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, are there any, anyone besides Joe that wants to speak?
I just have one speaker card for this item.
Is it Joe? All right, Joe.
Joe. So on the employee turnover, it's not really surprising to me. Working here, you know, it seems a lot similar to where I work. It seems like people generally like, you know, the employees that I talk to, they're not walking around, you know, like AutoZone employees, like they beat them in the back room or something. They seem like they generally get taken care of and when you talk to people, you know, they, they seem like they like to be here and they take pride in the, they take pride in the city. So, I mean, it's not really surprising. I've always thought, you know, it's always about contracts and this and that, but it's really about more than that. It's about whether you feel like, you know, like your employer wants you there, like that your employer value, your employer values your, you showing up and, and treats you decently. So I think there's been a market improvement over the last few years in just how, you know, it's, it's not, it's not so much Game of Thrones anymore, which is, you know, which I think it was in the past, a lot of, you know, looking over the shoulder. So that's to, that's to your credit as a manager, you know, inside the building. We've had our disagreements about different things, but I, I mean, I think there's been a lot of improvements inside the building, just in the attitude and, and just letting people run and do their job. Now for, for the, to, to ramp down to the usual Joe content, I do, and when, when the report comes back on the dispatch thing, the things that I've heard is the difficulties come when calls go back and forth between being a fire call and being a police call. You know, oh, my husband fell down, you know? Oh, and then it turns out that he fell down on a knife, you know? You know, that type of thing. So, you know, and they go, they, they go back and forth between, between two and now they have to call back and forth between the two, where before the dispatchers were sitting next to each other or they handled both. And so there, there, I, I've heard of difficulties in that, in that vein where, where the calls don't get handled as efficiently as they would have. So, you know, I, it would be interesting to hear how those went. Maybe there's a solution to that that I haven't heard about, but it'd be interesting to hear how those types of calls get handled. And the last item, I'm always curious when I hear utilities talking about the year-over-year or quarterly updates and they're always behind because they're year-over-year projects. But as I, as my, my, my understanding of math is this is kind of a rate and if it's a quarter, if you're, if you're below 25, then there at some point should be quarters where you're over 25. And it seems like every quarter, it seems like we're below 25 and I never really see the payoff where we go over 25. And I've never seen a year where we were at 125 that made up for the previous quarters. So for the year-over-year projects, that next year never seems to come. And I'm kind of curious how those numbers work out. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Joe. Are you guys good with comments or? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is administrative report fiscal year 2025, community events, co-sponsorship program requests. The illustrious Jason Lass will re-report out. Good luck.
All right, good evening, Council. Pleasure to be here today, just to provide an update on our co-sponsorship program as well as our request for fiscal year 25. There we go. The ask for you is fairly simple. We're just asking to review and approve the fiscal year 2025 co-sponsorship requests and funding for the fiscal year. The community events co-sponsorship program is intended to facilitate nonprofit community events that are open to the general public, provides one-time award in the form of a fee waiver, so we're doing in-kind assistance. And this in-kind support may be used to offset the fees and costs of services incurred by the requested community event. Essentially, this is a fee waiver program for city permits and staffing. Just want to be clear, that is not a cash grant or subsidy that can be drawn down upon. Seeing as this program has been gaining some momentum, we are changing things up a little bit this year to make the program more accessible to our community groups. To accomplish this, we are simply splitting the application process into two phases, six months each. Phase one, applications for July through December were made available in February and are before you today for review. Phase two, applications for January through June of 2025 will be made available in July and we will bring that ask back before you in October. Upon adoption, word letters will go out in June and November respective to the phases. This is the same program, just more opportunities to apply. To qualify for the Corona, the program, the Corona nonprofits must accomplish one or more of the following.
Mr. Lass, can I just interrupt you really quick? I have to accuse myself because CHPS is one of the, the folks that are getting this and I forgot to mention earlier, so my mistake.
So you gotta leave? All right, get out.
Give Wes a moment here.
All right.
All right, to qualify for the program, the Corona nonprofits must accomplish one or more of the following, which includes promoting Corona as a desirable place to live, visit or do business, as a destination or to encourage tourism, enhance quality of life and well-being, advance pride in a multicultural community, encourage neighborhood identity and pride and promote cultural and artistic wellness. Requests for phase one, July through December of this year include family health fair with the Corona family YMCA, and that's a new ask that will take place at Aubreydale Park. Barbers in backpacks will be back at the CCC to help with distribution of school supplies. The Circle Cities crowd would once again like to hold their Broadway concert at the HCC Theater. A new group for us, Support Sisters, who we worked with last year, executed a beautiful community health event, including mobile clinics and doctors and all kinds of great resources, would like to work with the city this year to make that a co-sponsorship event. We will continue the partnership with the Chamber Foundation for the Remembering 9/11 Patriot Day Ceremony. Also returning, Corona Lions Club for their pancake breakfast, a traditional favorite there. Two items that are very similar, we have Red Ribbon Week. We assist the Corona Norco Unified School District with hanging of banners on Sixth Street. There's just four of those, so it's kind of declined over the years. Our CNSD Parent Teacher Association is also asking for a Red Ribbon Festival. They did this last year as an independently organized event on the HCC lawn and would like to work with us this year to do that event. Also new, we have Light the Night, which is going to be a walk at Santana Park, kind of similar to Relay for Life where people can sign up. It would be, include some luminaries and a designated path of remembrance. New for this year, we have a proposal from the Construction Industry Education Foundation to do a high school trade fair. So they would open up a portion of Santana Park to do tours of equipment and also meet with different folks, talking about different trades that they can get into. New for this year, and this is a correction, sorry, Women's Improvement Club is actually the Corona Art Association and they will be, they would like to have their Bow Arts Ball, which is a costume ball at the Circle City Center. Amber Waves of Grain is requesting to come back just simply for advertising. New for this year is Dia de los Muertos, a festival for either City Park or the Historic Civic Center. It's for about 350 people, so it's can contain more like a park permit type space. Just depends on what's happening with the construction at the Veterans Memorial or at City Park. And then last, we have the Step Up for Safety 5K. So understanding that this is budget season, we did want to include an ask for events. We would know will return in phase two, January through June of 2025. Phase two ask will come before the council again in October, but we wanted to be sure that our usual groups are at least noted. Returning, we anticipate Dreams and Decisions, Relay for Life, Memorial Day Walk, Vintage Home Tour, Cinco de Mayo Parade and Festival, Poker Tournament, Lobster Fest and the Heritage Park Antiques Fair. There will still be plenty of opportunities for new and emerging groups to apply in that second phase as well. So when we bring this back before you, it might look a little different. Combined, we are anticipating an ask of at least 42,800 in waived fees for co-sponsorship funding in fiscal year 25. This is a projected increase of 16,840 over the previous year and we may see some additional requests when we bring phase two back to you. This increase is largely due to increased event cost, span of the event and just some general higher cost items too, like a parade, for example, requires a pretty hefty support element. As we wrap up, the reminder of the ask is this simply a review, approve the fiscal year 2025 co-sponsorship requests and I am here if you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Jason. Are there, Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay, public comments closed. Tony?
I just had one question. Mr. Lass, when is it, were you going to announce the bans today or when was that?
I have been promised by our communications department that they are working on an excellent marketing campaign. I'm hoping to have that for you by next meeting.
Okay.
I, I, I promise it's going to be worth the wait.
Okay. Thank you.
Can't get it out of him, huh?
Yes, there will be some returning favorites, don't worry. Yes, there will be some returning favorites, don't worry.
Jim? Jackie?
Mr. Lass? Yes, thank you. Mr. Lass, I like the idea, I like the two phases or the two application times in the year, and I wonder if, if that decision, did it come because we're receiving requests for sponsorships kind of like out of cycle? And were there a lot of interested inquiries? And if so, are two application times a year enough? I'd like to hear a little bit more about how we came to that cosponsorship timeline.
Yes, council members. So we did, we did in the past year get some requests that came in outside of the normal cycle, so the decision was made to break it into the two six-month cycles as opposed to just the one annual cycle. And it's just to provide groups, again, the opportunity, if an event might come up within that one-year period, they don't have to wait until the following year, they'll have that, that six-month window to be able to apply. But as Mr. Lass mentioned, we are accounting now for the recurring events that we see every year, even though they're going to be in the second cycle, we are accounting for those right now. So we're hopeful that breaking it into the six-month windows will be able to accommodate everyone. If we still see events requests coming in that don't fit within that timeline, then we can, we can consider additional adjustments in future years.
No, I agree. I, and I appreciate it. I think it also puts this program in the public eye more frequently and makes nonprofits aware of this opportunity, you know, more often than just once a year. So I'm in favor of this timeline, so, and, and great job. I'm happy to see the increase.
Okay. Tony, you're in favor? Jim? And I am as well. All right, we're good. I think you got your, your vote. Wesley, you can come in now.
Mayor, sorry, this, this item actually requires a motion.
Oh, Wes, you can't come in now. I'll make the motion. Does anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Councilmember Casillas, can I please get your voice vote?
All right, 4-0. All right. We're going to wander into some dangerous waters right now, so with that, I, I want to make a statement. A couple of years ago, I pushed a council agenda item that I really wanted, and Wes opposed me, and in an email, I told him to F off. And I regretted it ever since. It just was not me at my best, and I really do regret it. So just want people to know that. And then I would also like to remind everyone that Ms. Osco is in the room, and she does not tolerate bad behavior, and I would not want to face her wrath, let alone Amelia's. So that in mind, we are going to go into a request by Councilmember Speak, asking the city council to approve a resolution stating the city's desire to save the Corona Depot building from future demolition located at 150 Depot Drive. Joanne Coletta, Planning and Development Director, will present this item.
Thank you. And really, what you just said was the ask this evening from Councilmember Speak. So what I'm going to do before I turn this over to the city council, I did want to just provide you with a quick timeline on the property, just to give it a little bit of perspective. The Corona Depot building is located at 150 Depot Drive. It was constructed in 1937, and it was historically a train station for the Santa Fe Railroad, and it still exists there today. In 2004, the property was placed on the city's heritage inventory. However, our heritage inventory is a list of all properties that can be eligible for a landmark listing. However, the previous and the current property owners have never nominated it to be a local landmark, so it still rests on the heritage inventory today. In 2006, the RCTC owned the property, but they did declare it surplus property, no longer for their need. And at that time, our Corona Redevelopment Agency did purchase the property. And then in 2012, our Corona Redevelopment Agency was dissolving, along with many others in the state of California due to state legislation. And as part of that, the agency had to start selling off some of its assets, which some of it was property. This was one of those assets. Today, that property owner is now looking to sell the property, and that's where we are today. So with that, as you know, the ask is whether or not the city council would like to consider a resolution, asking this, basically saving the desire, or saving the Corona Depot from future demolition, and I will turn it over to the council for discussion.
Before that, do you guys want to?
I just want to give you some background of why, why this was important to me. So in looking at this and seeing that, that my understanding at the time was since a property was nominated or was provided a historic marker, and that historic marker, there was a historic marker that was placed on site, the assumption was that it would be on the register. And lo and behold, looking at our own code, 1763 dash, or 0.070, it says that an historic marker defined by this chairper may be listed on the Corona register by resolution of the city council. And frankly, when, you know, the CHPS and CHA and a few others over the years have placed markers, those markers were never approved by a resolution of the council. And just by doing that, it would have done this. I'm not asking for this to be today, I'm just saying that's one of the, one of the issues that I wanted to, to bring forward. The, the depot is literally the reason that we're here. Without the, the train, you know, without my, and my theory is that, that Robert Taylor, when he founded Corona, had some inside information that, that, that there was going to be a train state, a train line that was going to come through this area, and there was a lot of conjecture on where the line was going to go, and he lobbied pretty hard for there to be a stop in Corona. And without this depot, without a depot, period, there would be no Corona. There would be, there would probably most likely be no Norco. There would be nor, no Norconian. There would be no Naval Hospital. There would be no Lemon Capital of the world without this depot. Most people that came to town or left this town, including up until the 50s, left through this depot. And, and I think that, that it, that I think that's important enough to the city for us to, to at least make a resolution stating that, that our desire is to ensure that this isn't demolished and lost to history. You know, you talk to folks that have been here for any period of time, especially folks that have been here in the 80s, and you talk about the loss of, of Corona history, and you'll hear the Carnegie Library, and I'm not saying that, that the Corona Depot is the, the Carnegie Library, but people saw it the same way. It wasn't being used, it was falling apart, it was, you know, a multitude of, of other things that were wrong with it, and people raised up, tried to stop it. City manager at the time decided that, issued a demo permit, and it was executed on a Sunday in the middle of the night. And people are still hurt by it. And I think that there's plenty of, of places around town that have been destroyed over time, and I don't want to sit here and, and be someone that watches a really, one of the, the most important pieces of our history potentially be demolished.
All right. Thank you, Wes. Let's, let's do public comments, and then we'll bring it back. With that, Sylvia, the, it's open.
Mayor, we have four speaker cards for this item, and we have somebody on Zoom for this item. We also received 23 emails. The council has copies of the emails, and they'll be included in the meeting minutes. And all 23 emails were in support of the resolution.
Joe, before you go, can we do the Zoom call first? Sylvia, can we do the Zoom call first? Welcome.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Tamara Hollingsworth. I am the current owner of the property at 150 Depot Drive, where the, the depot sits. I am currently selling the property. I very much appreciate the historical value of the depot, but it has faced some very significant challenges for me and my family. We have had two restaurant bar tenants. The last two that I've had on the property have failed. It's a very difficult location to keep a business open, a restaurant bar. It's difficult to access, and it's very noisy because of the trains, and there's a multitude of other issues that have caused them to fail. So unfortunately, I was not able to find a tenant. It's vacant at the time. The building is not in good condition for various reasons. But the first thing I did when I wanted to sell it is I offered it to the city. The city declined to purchase it after Justin Tucker took a walk through the property and found some historical items, which are now being stored in his office, but decided that it wasn't something that the council, that the, that the city wanted to purchase. I then offered to donate the building and ask the city to move that, move it, donate it to the city and move it at their expense, and there was no interest in that. Also approached the RCTC, but they were not interested in, in the property. It doesn't have enough parking for them. So I was only able to list it for sale with other businesses. Not a lot of interest, a couple of, a hookah lounge, a company who sells marijuana were the most interested, and I didn't feel that those were good options for the city, for this location. The building has been ravaged by homeless and vandals. It's extremely difficult to keep it safe. I respectfully request that you understand my situation. I do have a fire, been all lumber. I think that they're the best option. They're well acquainted with the city, they're well-respected, they can take care of the property, and I really respect the fact that it is historical, but I, I really hope that you understand my situation and that the building is not going to get really in any better condition at any time. I don't have the funds to be able to restore it. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. With that, Rosemary, is that you? All right, you're up.
Capuano, I'm a resident. I'm also an historian at Corona Heritage Foundation, and I have had a statement tonight. I'm just hoping to learn that our planning department wants to recommend the demolition of Corona Depot. We don't cherish our past, we cave into big business. The reason Corona grew is due to our founding fathers. To become successful, we needed a railroad. Our fathers had the foresight to make it happen in 1887. Within a generation, we became the lemon capital of the world. We shipped product all over the world. Our original depot was built in 1906 and replaced in 1937 with the timber from the original structure. It's all redwood. To say the building is not historic is hogwash. Many of us had to replace roofs, windows, and stucco. It's part of overall maintenance. Hire a, I can't say it, hire a preservationist, restore and repurpose it. The depot has sisters in Upland and Orange that survived due to the foresight of the respective councils. So can you, Corona. The city has torn down a Carnegie library for our never-built chicken franchise, a Pacific Electric Depot for a gas station, and demolished downtown. We have some record. Now we want to tear down the depot and expand the lumberyard. When's this foolishness going to stop? We need to start cherishing our past, even though it's no longer on our city logo. The council needs a draft, a resolution to save the Corona Depot from destruction. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Rosemary.
I expected those who are other, put their cards in earlier to go first. I would like to thank Joanne, I can't think of your last name, Joanne, for giving us a timeline on the, on the, on the history of the, the structure. There are some additions to that she's not aware of. In the early part of the 1920s, 2020s, no. Okay. Yeah, early 2020s. CHPS had the desire to make that a National Register nomination. And we approached RCTC and got a firm no, because our understanding was it required a approval by the owner. We got the same response from the city the first time around. And when my wife and I attended a California Historical Resources Commission meeting, we found out that public buildings are not subject to owner approval. And so we came back enthused about nominating this structure to the National Register. Unfortunately, the lease ran out, or the, not the lease, but ownership changed to Tamara's father. And so we, we had to get his approval. He was perfectly willing for us to put up a monument there on the site, but not to nominate it to the National Register. So that's the history of that. One thing I would like to clarify, I have heard several discussions of the survey that was made in 1982 in, with regard to the status of that structure and the North, North Corona development over there. And there was a survey done by the state, and the survey basically says that this building is historic, and it is subject to listing on the local register. Now, nobody here that I know of in, in the city ever interpreted that correctly. What that means is, when you nominate it on the National Register, you have three choices to choose from classifying the building. It's either private, it's public, I mean, I'm sorry, it's local, state, or federal, or something like that. There's three classifications. And all that meant was that if that was nominated, it had to be nominated under the local category classification. So I wanted to clarify that. And my time is up.
Don Fuller, this is a sticky deal, conflict between property rights and individual property owners and what you might like to do. And I, I, I am on the side of Mr. Speak and wanting to preserve this building, and I'm not doing that without being torn. But the town has lost a lot of things. Most of them happened before I came here. I think the story of the loss of the Carnegie library for a Pioneer Chicken that, that, that never did show up, that's worth an eight-minute bit in the comedy club. And the loss of the, the old downtown for what exists there now with that silly S curve in Main Street, and you get off, you get off at that, what should be the main exit for the town, off the freeway, and you get, and one of the first things you see is a restaurant that hasn't been doing any business for several years. Looks halfway derelict there. So we should be able to do better. My vote has to be for saving this. My vote has to be for saving this building. I wish it could have been done better, but, and it's not without some inner conflict in voting for that. But that still is a way I would vote for it. Thank you for your time.
Just what everybody else has said. I think we really need to cherish this building as being the lemon capital of the world. The only way anything got out was through the train depot. It's like a landmark in my mind. It's a no-brainer that we should keep it as best we can. We've lost too much. But then again, I'm only a newcomer to Corona. I've only been here for 32 years, so. But I still think that we need to keep it as best as possible. Thank you.
Morgan 2063, I had to chuckle a little bit when she's, when the owner of the building said she respected the historical nature of the building. Yet, screw it, you know, it's a mess. So, you know, what exactly does that mean? If, if we can't save this building, we have like three old things left in Corona. If we can't save this building, then you might as well scrap the entire historic, you know, nonsense about the whole thing and act like, if not this one, which one? We've got Historic Civic Center that I don't think is as old as this one. And we've got the Women's Improvement Center, pretty cool building. We got the Corona Theater. We already tried to take that down once and it barely survived. And then we pretty much got this. If not this, what? It could stay there and Genal could use the property. As I understand, it looks more of an annoyance. You know what? There's a perfectly good building across the street from Genal. They could, Lucas is moving out. They could move in over there. Cry me a river if they need this one little spot. No, no, no. There's a whole big old lot over there. They could have that whole other building. And then they wouldn't have to cross the railroad tracks with the forklifts. So, you know, I love Genal. Genal's been part of the city. Like a good third of my house came from Genal when we remodeled it. So I'm down, I'm on Team Genal. But no, not this, not that. We can't do it again. We cannot do it again. I remember going to the depot when it was open for a while. It was, it was awesome. It's an awesome building and it could be an awesome place again. It could be a cool place again. Honestly, probably a pretty decent place for a cool cannabis lounge or whatever. You know, it just seems like a cool building. It's a place you might want to hang out. It's got, it's got cool architecture. It's in a unique place, you know. It's just a failure of imagination more than anything. But you cannot let this, you cannot let this one go. I mean, just what's left? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Joe. Sylvia, are there any other?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Negative Ghost Rider, the flight pattern is full. Let's close comments. Wes, did you want to go or?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, and I do feel for Ms. Hollingsworth, however, you know, she inherited a liability. She inherited an historic building. You know, we've, we've had other folks and that have, we've, you know, made, improved their, their building because they didn't follow, you know, some of the things that we've asked. This is well far and beyond, you know, any part of that. So I know that there was an offer on the building that, you know, to turn it back into a bar and a restaurant. I know that her father, Mr. Zuko, really loved the building. One of the reasons he bought it from the city and got a pretty good deal was the fact that it was an historic building. I think he paid about half of what we paid RCTC for it. And, and I know there's nothing in the paperwork that said he was going to, you know, restore it or anything, but he kept good care of it, did a great job. Allowed the CHPS to put up a marker and frankly, just because, you know, I don't think anybody read this chapter to come back to the council and ask for a resolution for this to be placed on the, on at least a local register. I think it, we wouldn't even be having this discussion or at least having this discussion until there was a, you know, a plan forward. I love Genal. I don't want Ms. Hollingsworth to be hurt, but at the same time, there's only one of these. And I'd like us to take a stand that we want to make sure that we preserve it and at least exercise all the options that we can. And, you know, before we go forward with any other changes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Durleth, you know, I need to ask some legal questions here. The resolution is a piece of paper, essentially. There's, there's no teeth to it. Do I understand that correctly?
Well, the resolution is not yet drafted.
Or could, I mean, essentially it's just a piece of paper that there's no teeth to it. Is that correct?
Well, since the city doesn't have any development authority over it in terms of preserving it, all the resolution could be is a desire to encourage the property owner to maintain it.
And if that resolution wasn't worded correctly, could we be subject to, you know, a legal fight?
Well, yes, we have to, we have to be careful in terms of what we say because we cannot tell the property owner to preserve it. Can't insist upon it. There is a process to follow if they wish to demolish this type of building. So they're authorized to follow that process. We can't tell them they can't follow that process. We can't tell them they can't do anything with the building. We can't tell them they have to preserve it or list it further on a registry. We can't do anything like that. All we can do is encourage the current property owner or future property owner to preserve it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Durleth. So, I mean, in my mind, this resolution signals to our business community that, that we're not business friendly and that we are going to do everything that we can actively to dissuade what they want to do with their private business. And, and to me, that's a, that's a really bad precedence to set because we are a business-friendly community and we want to signal to our businesses that we're here to help them expand. And, you know, for me, looking at this, I mean, you know, Ms. Hollingsworth is the owner of this building. And she said that she's had, you know, a very difficult time finding someone to take over the building. I don't believe that she lives in the state or in Corona. And so having an out-of-state owner that doesn't have the funds to, you know, properly restore this building. And I know that the building is in a pretty bad state of disrepair. And, you know, coming from the construction industry and having seen it, I mean, it's a, it's a big undertaking to restore that building. And having worked on the other side of that building, you know, on the north side at Genal, knowing that that train is running 150-plus times and that it's going to be 250 times probably in the next 10 years. I mean, that's a big hindrance in trying to run any type of business. So, you know, it doesn't surprise me that, that it's not been a successful business for many, many years. And that bothers me tremendously. I mean, we, this city has had multiple opportunities to do something with this property, including this council not wanting to purchase this building, not wanting to take this building from, from the owner just to move the building. I mean, it's, it's in bad shape. And I, for one, am not interested in overstepping our reach as a body, as a governing body and trying to dictate what, what happens with this, with this building. Several times, RCTC didn't want to do anything with it. The previous owner didn't want to do anything with it. The city didn't want to do anything with it. We didn't want to buy it. And we've had multiple opportunities to do so. I think this resolution amounts to really just political posturing. And I'm not here for that. I'm here to, to, you know, really look after what is in our purview. And this isn't in our purview. So this resolution to me is, is absolutely ridiculous.
Mr. Durleth, is it not true that the resolution would come, or demolition permit would come to this body for approval?
Wes?
Okay.
Tony, were you done?
Nope.
Okay, keep going.
There, there is a process that the owner of the property is going through. There was no requirements put on when we sold it. And for us to, to signal that, you know, we're going to be difficult about this, I'm concerned, number one, about, you know, the liability that we're exposing ourselves to. I think immediately it devalues the property. And, and, you know, that's, that's going to cause a financial hardship to the owner. And furthermore, if, if the, if the building doesn't sell and it falls into further disrepair and it's lost due to fire, damage, theft, what have we accomplished? We've accomplished nothing. We've, we've intentionally or unintentionally destroyed that building. I think that, you know, I do have a personal connection to Genal Lumber. I worked there for many years and I know, you know, the quality of their operation. And, and I know that having this parcel would, would really benefit their operation. And I'm interested in helping a local business that I don't mind saying has been around longer than Corona, has been around longer than Corona. It, stop interrupting me, Wes, please. Has been around longer than Corona, has been a city. And they want to expand their operation. They've been in Corona for probably 65 years and they want to expand their operation. Potentially, I'm not interested in doing anything that, that signals that we want to be difficult about that. So I do not support this resolution at all.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Well, I really want to find a way to save this building. And I just, I don't know what that is necessarily. And I don't want to save it and have it stay in its current state either. I feel that, you know, the property owner purchased this property knowing the, knowing the set of rules and that if the city came in when it's not our property and said, "We want to change those rules on you," I would think that would open us up to some liability. That being said, I really want to save this building. Do we know why historically the city didn't want to purchase? Or, or put this on a higher historical list?
I think Ms. Galatic had probably answered the question better than I, but I think the property owner has to be willing to do that. I don't know why the city didn't do it when we owned it. But why we didn't want to purchase it? The last time we discussed that was how long ago?
Well, I guess, but, but historically it was, it was under the redevelopment agency for many years, right? And they didn't want anything. And I'm just curious why?
I don't have an answer for why we didn't elevate the historical reference of it.
I'm not opposed at all to supporting a resolution. I just don't, I don't know really what it, what it does. If it causes maybe a future property owner to pause and really take a look to see how they could save it. I think it's probably worth trying. Do we have any idea what it would cost to move, relocate that building to somewhere where it could be preserved somehow?
We have not explored the cost to any extent to the, that we really know what it would cost to do that. So that would have.
Or if we could even do it.
We also don't know the feasibility of doing it either.
I'd like to know if that's an option for us to consider. I also would like to know, so we had a cannabis and a hookah lounge thinking about, they wouldn't mind that building. Well, would they be interested in purchasing and preserving it? If they are, let's go smoke a bowl over there. You know? I mean, if somebody's willing to put that money into it and save this building and utilize it because it is not a very good location for much, is that, is that an option? You know? And I don't have those answers. So I need to have those answers.
Jackie, are you there?
Oh, yeah. So I, so I want to piggyback off of what Jim said. I think there's, there's more that I would like to know here because ultimately I would like to save this building also. I'd like to know what it would cost for it to be moved and what that option is like. But, so, so that is my take-home message, right? I want to save this building. But I'll tell you, it doesn't sit right. And, and there's two other points I want to make here. And the first is that it doesn't sit right with me to impose on property owners for the same reason that we had this discussion about how to impose historical improvements in like the historical downtown for homeowners. And I just don't think it's right for the city to force someone who's living in or who owns a historical building to make, to force their hand into something that just doesn't either, A, make financial sense to them or that they physically, that they just can't do. I am uncomfortable with that. I'm uncomfortable with the city imposing those restrictions on a property owner or those enforcing that. So while we all want to save this building, then there's a question of like, so, so how? And who pays and where to? And I think those logistical questions are really critical for us to consider if we're being, if we're being, like if we're really considering saving this building. Because again, historically, it's the city that's messed up. We had the power to save the building. We had the power to own the building. So, you know what I'm saying? So anyway, I want to pick up on and follow up on that idea that there's more to be known. But my first point is that I'm uncomfortable with the imposition of, of, of forced preservation on a property owner. But my second point, and I think this one's more important and as we consider, you know, what our body does. Now, as a, as a council, I think we've been, we've been good in incorporating a practice of not, not working on or not touching controversial resolutions. Because controversial resolutions are a formal statement from the city, but they are not legally binding. They can't, they can't make a person do a thing. It just says the city feels this way about this thing. And what we have seen across the county, across the state, are that cities will bring up resolutions on things like the war in Gaza, on, you know, sanctuary cities. And we see how that turns out. And I think that it is a disservice to our city and to our residents when we talk about resolutions and essentially play into an inadvertent misinformation of our citizens. Because I think the folks who wrote in and the folks who are commenting really believe that a resolution is going to save this building. And, and it is, it is in our power to not misinform and not misguide the residents of Corona about what these things mean. And so as a council, we've been really good about not touching resolutions that one, you know, wade into waters that we don't have any jurisdiction over and that just create controversy. And I think it's really unfortunate that we're having a conversation about a resolution that I think people are misled on what it's going to actually do. And so I don't like that. I don't like having to vote on a thing that doesn't and can't actually produce what the citizens think it will produce. And those are my, those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I have some comments. I want to play with the math for a minute. So it's my understanding that, that Mrs. Hollingsworth's father bought this building and property 10 years ago for $300,000. Am I right? And when they brought it to the city to have us, have the city purchase it, they were asking for 2.3 million. Is that the number that they asked the city, higher? What was the number?
2.7 million.
2.7 million. And then, so in 10 years, they went from 300K to 2.7 million, correct? That's the number they asked of the city. And then Genal Lumber, 1.2 million is? Okay, the number I've heard from Genal Lumber is 1.2 million is what they're asking for. So I don't find. So I, I don't find Mrs. Hollingsworth attempt to sell it to the city. I never found it to be fair. And I'm actually insulted that she brought it up in her comments. With that, I'm glad that we can have an open conversation and that the public can know of this business and that we can take steps to hopefully save the depot. I, uh, I have mad, mad respect for history of this city. I find the depot precious. It's the only location where an active President of the United States stopped in our city and spoke for a little bit, President Harrison. I, uh, I also, um, had the opportunity to speak to our city manager, Jacob Ellis, on Monday about this. And, um, it was just a conversation between me and him that do you, my question was, do you think that we could relocate this to a, to another spot in the city? And if so, are there spots available? And he feels that there are. So I, I sit with Jim and Jackie and most likely Wes that we, uh, we start looking for other places rather than pass a resolution tonight. I'd like to, um, start looking for other places. I think Ms. Hollingsworth, when her father did buy the property, she bought the depot. It, it's not, you buy the property and then knock it down. You buy the property and what's on the property is what's there. I think she stands to make a lot of money if the depot got knocked down. And I think she could also help to pay with relocation costs if necessary and still make a lot of money. So with that, I'd like to make an alternate motion, that the city start looking for possible locations as well as city explore options to if the depot can even be moved at all. So that would be my motion.
Well, that's pretty much what I asked for too, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, the, the resolution or the drafting of resolution was just basically expressing an interest that we want to preserve the building. It wasn't any kind of imposition and I'm frankly frightened that, that folks read it as a, that we were imposing something on a, on a, on a business. And all it said was, "We don't want to tear it down." That's my request. It was in there as pretty plain English what I wanted. It's okay. I mean, if, if everybody feels that the, the resolution is somehow going to damage us, I, I laugh because it's, you know, ridiculous. The fact that, that a resolution would be seen as something that would be divisive in our community when it's, you know, 24 people took a chance to write. And yeah, there's some misunderstandings that people thought that they were, you know, saving the building. But in, in essence, it's, it's, it's a position that the city would be taking that we would prefer it to be preserved, not that we're, not that we're forcing anybody, which is an absolute, you know, travesty that, that folks would read or even profess that this is some side of, some side of, um, strong arm, um, resolution, which is, uh, sad to me. But, um, yeah, I, I'm interested in, in finding out some answers. I mean, I had a, a pretty long discussion with the broker today and, um, you know, I expressed to him the same as if you were to buy a gas station and it had a bunch of, you know, a bunch of crap in the ground, you got to deal with it. You know, Ms. Hollingsworth inherited a historic building and she's got to deal with it. I'm certainly willing to come to do some investigation and find out what we can do and how we can help to preserve the building in some way. So I have a lot of questions. You know, I have a lot of, a lot of questions that we still need answers for. I think that Jim came up with a pretty good, um, list there to find out what our options are and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. I'm not going to, you know, die on the sword for the, for the resolution, but I am going to vehemently, um, uh, oppose any kind of, um, you know, decision that this was a foolhardy move or an attempt to trick the public or to bring up something that wasn't in the purview of the city when frankly, the, the city wouldn't be here if not for this property. So I'll leave it at that, but I'm happy to, to investigate a little further to figure out, you know, what our options are.
Wes, I, I don't, um, I, I'm not opposed to a resolution. I really, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it's simply a desire.
It's all it is.
And, and it would cause pause for a property owner to think, "Do I really want to knock this down? I know I can, but do I want to?" Because that's really all the resolution's saying.
That's it.
Okay, but that's, that's okay. I'm, I'm willing to give someone the ability to pause for a second and think about it. I don't know, I don't think it'll work, but it could. But while we are working on something like that, we can also look to see, can we relocate it? Where could we put it? Are there any other options to preserve it before we just rush into doing that? That's all.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I think too, just.
So Mr. Mayor, I.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I think it is important, the distinction between moving forward and discovering options to save the depot and exploring moving costs and locations as opposed to voting for a resolution tonight. I, it, it matters.
We're not voting a resolution tonight.
So then, wonderful. If the resolution's off the table and the discussion is about how do we save the depot, move it to a different location and what does it cost to do those things? I'm, that's what I want.
The vote?
I, I don't want to start the precedent, the precedent of a resolution that can be misguided.
I think that the vote tonight is to whether or not to draft a resolution and what would, what would go in it, correct?
Yes. We're seeking.
I would support the mayor's amendment to move forward to explore these questions and not vote on a resolution.
Could we do this? Could we move forward with exploring? And then once we get the answers back, decide whether we want to explore a resolution?
Yeah. I'm down.
Right? Because that's not off the table, but we're going to get some answers first and then we can move forward with more information.
I, I think that's the best.
Okay. That's my motion.
Do we need to vote on that or is it just?
I think if, Mayor, if what we're, just to recap, to make sure that we're clear is that if the direction from council is to look at the feasibility of moving the building first, and then second, look at exploring locations that a building can be moved to. Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Of course, bring those back and then you would further determine your course of action from there. Then that direction, we're fine with that. If, if you have a majority, you can vote on it or you can give me a thumbs up either way.
Tony?
Thumbs up on my.
How do you explore the feasibility of moving a building you don't own?
Yeah, we'd have to contact the property owner and get permission to go there with someone who's in, who's a building from a, from a moving company and, and, uh, and look at that. So we'd need permission to be onsite and do that. And we would explore that and report back of whether or not we're successful.
Okay, thank you.
I think you got your thumbs up, Jacob.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the direction.
Thanks and appreciated, by the way. Okay. And no one told anyone to F off. So that's, that's good. Number 31. Administrative report. Council member requests community awareness camp, oh boy, community awareness campaign lighting program update. Andrew Kim, are you here, dude? Well, Andrew Kibb, Andrew Kim, a city management fellow. I still don't know what that means. Will present this item. Good luck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is an update on the community awareness campaign lighting program. The ask is that the city council provide direction on a community awareness campaign lighting program and policy. This item came up, item came about from council member Dario's request to consider a community awareness light campaign lighting program. This was brought back to the council on the January 17th meeting where the HCC was identified as a potential location if the council decided to move forward with such a program. At the meeting, the, the item was requested to be brought back to the council for feedback on the creation of an official policy. Some background from the previous meeting. If we were going to illuminate a building exterior, it would include replacing and installing 10 to 20 color-changing fixtures or spotlights around a building. The light color could be changed on select dates for, or for special events. And on just regular days, we could use standard lighting to illuminate the building. The estimated cost would be between $50 and $150,000 per building. Some policy considerations are lighting a city property for specific causes could be seen as an endorsement of an issue, particularly if other causes are denied. As such, we would need a clear policy for approval and denial criteria. Some pros are that a program would bring awareness to various campaigns. It promotes civic engagement and there's aesthetic appeal. Some cons are that there's over 180 potential awareness and recognition campaigns and holidays to choose from and some campaigns will not be chosen to receive recognition. As well as some campaigns may be viewed as controversial and there could be fairness, equity and free speech concerns. The image below kind of depicts one controversy, um, kind of locally and recently. The city of Santa Ana has a water tower where they have a lighting program. And back in December, it was lit up in the colors of Palestine to support a ceasefire. So it does create, um, there are instances where it could create controversy within the community. Uh, this is going to be a similar slide from the last presentation. Upon further research, additional observances and awareness events were located. I believe the last slide had 164. Now it's up to 183 and there's probably likely more out there due to international holidays or in events, international as well as world days, national days. There are specific cancers directed towards specific genders, races, children. So there's going to be quite a few different, uh, observance and awareness events. Full list was included in the agenda report with the specific colors that were assigned to them. Keeping this in mind, staff identified three potential program policy options. Option one would be pre-selected holidays in the application. This would include where the council would choose, uh, annual holidays to recognize automatically. And then there would be the option for organizations to submit applications for recognition. Option number two would be pre-selected campaigns where the council would choose the holidays as well as the campaigns and there would be no application for outside organizations. And option three is there's going to be no program. It would remain the status quo. Uh, this is going to be the staff recommendation because there's no controversy, no fairness concerns and no free speech concerns. For policy option one, staff has went ahead and created a potential application. If the council decides to move forward with this, we modeled this off after a, another city. Some items that are on the application are that it must be for a nonprofit organization and community focused. Requests will be limited to a maximum period of up to one day. The Historic Civic Center would be lit for a maximum of 15 days per month. The application must be submitted by authorized personnel of the nonprofit organization. There's no automatic renewal, so they must apply each year. And there would be blackout days from the end of November through the second week of January. Uh, it would be reserved for seasonal lighting. And then there would be City of Corona reserved holiday lightings. This is be where the council would choose which holidays it would want to recognize and they would be locked in. There would only be one request application per organization per 12-month period. It would be first come, first served. No request would be considered more than 365 days in advance or less than 14 days prior to the requested date. Policy option number two is pre-selected campaigns. This is where the council would establish a list of all holidays and campaigns that they would want to recognize. There would be no outside application and the list would not change until the council creates a new list and that we would want to do it no more than once annually. That way we're not changing the list constantly. Option number three, uh, which is a staff recommendation, is the status quo and no program. There would be no controversy, no fairness concerns, no free speech concerns, no initial cost or ongoing expenses. And again, the ask is that the city council provide direction on a community awareness campaign lighting program and policy. And I'm available for any questions.
All right. Sylvia, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah, so this was, this was my request and, and, you know, I fielded a lot of calls last year about, you know, different abilities to, uh, support some national causes. And, and I think that this was a, a pretty good idea. And, um, you know, I think really what, what, what kind of led me to this is maybe it was two or three years ago, the way that the, the Civic Center was lit up for our Christmas event, which is one of my favorite events. And, um, they had up, shooting up lights that were holiday colors and there was, I don't know, maybe 10 of them or something like that. And I, I just thought that the HCC was beautiful and it was lit up beautifully. And so thinking about that and how do we support some of these national causes? I, I appreciate staff's effort that they put into this and, and I'm kind of, I'm leaning on like a hybrid of like one and two. I like some, I like some pieces about that. But ideally, I, I think that I'm leaning towards picking the holidays ourselves and doing it once a year. And, um, it gives us an opportunity to show support to a lot of, and originally it was just nationally recognized holidays that, you know, along the vein of Red Ribbon Week is red and Autism Week is blue and, and a couple other things. I realized that that list got really long really quick and that there's going to be a bunch of people that are, that are wanting to, you know, light the HCC for a lot of things that would probably be controversial, which is why I wanted to limit it, limit it to the nationally recognized, not that 183, but the nationally recognized 12 to 15. And I, I love the fact that they said from, maybe it was November to January or something that it was reserved for, you know, the holidays. And I think that that even makes it a little bit easier for us. So I, I'm 100% in, in support of this, but I'm, you know, I'm just one vote. So thank you.
All right. One vote, Tony. That's what they call them. Wes?
You know, we, just in the previous item and on other items, why are we inviting drama?
Your what?
Why, and why we're inviting drama? We're inviting problems. I said this during the study session when we talked about this and I opposed it then. I oppose it now. I, I support staff's, um, recommendation because no matter how much we think we're going to pick, uh, there's going to be somebody that's either going to be upset that we didn't pick their thing that's very important to them because of, you know, insert A, B and C. And though I feel for all of them and I, and I'd like to, to be able to do those, but, you know, as staff has pointed out, 180 different choices. You know, I could see us getting into First Amendment issues, um, that we picked nationally registered, nationally red, uh, recognized. Well, what nationally, what, what national group is recognizing these? And it's just like, I'd see us wading into, into ridiculousness and, and this taking up, you know, when we, whenever we have this and it's just, it's inviting, inviting drama. So I, my vote is still not to do this and, and support staff's option.
Yeah, my decision is also maintain the status quo. Thank you.
Jackie?
This one makes me sad because I, um, I, I was in favor of it and I wanted to explore what it could look like. But seeing what's come before us, um, the total number of national observances, see, it just makes me want to say like, this is why we can't have nice things. Like we, we, we are going to find ourselves in a, in a position where, where we will be the arbiters of what is, um, accepted and what isn't. And, and the council's fallible, um, the five of us there or the five in the future. And what we believe is okay is, uh, is not what's going to be agreed by the others. And, and it, and it's not for fear of like wanting to make a statement. It's the fact that like our responsibility above all else is to the city and it's not to our own bias and interests. And I can just see this turning into that and it, and it's, and it saddens me. So, um, for that reason, um, I, I find myself, uh, you know, changing my mind from where we were the last time before we explored what the national observance, what the observances could be. And I think that ultimately, um, staying with the status quo is going to be better for our city. So, thank you.
All right. I like the Christmas lights too. And I, I'm not going to lie, I'm a fan of exterior illumination. Yeah. Yeah. I'd like to go. I'd like to go Griswold on the House one of these eight years. So, but I'm the fourth vote for status quo. So I think, there you go, Mr. Ellis. All right, thank you, Andrew Kim, a fellow. Thirty-two administrative report. Utility, oh, gosh, hits just keep coming. Utility rate study, policy objectives. Jackie loves this stuff. Katie Hockett, Assistant Director of something Utilities, is going to present this item. Where is Katie? Oh, Katie's over there. Give a hell.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to present on the policy objectives. I want to thank you all for participating in that survey that we sent out as quickly as you did. I appreciate that. And then Sanjay with RDN is going to go ahead and present that summary.
Oh, by the way, before you speak, Jackie threatened us with our lives if we didn't take the survey quickly. Just want that on the public record.
That's not how it happened.
I'm very impressed about the speed of that, your information that you gave back to us, because I actually told Tom that you have very highly motivated, highly motivated city council members. He said yes. So you definitely delivered, and you impressed me. I work for a lot of different agencies, cities. So honorary mayor, city council, it's my pleasure to be here. And staff, and thank you, Katie, for that introduction. We're going to be talking about the utility rate study, and this is the first part of our process that we're going to be going through, our agenda, our journey together. So today, I'm going to talk about the study objectives, talk about the rate study process, go over the policy objectives and the schedule. So what's the ask? The ask is the city council review the ranking of the policy objectives for each utility and affirm the top three objectives. These three of top three objectives will guide us through this process that we're going to be going through together. So they are key in this process. What are the study objectives? The study objectives are a couple of folds. First, to determine the goals of the studies. So those are the top three. Engage stakeholders and garner buy-in for the proposed rates and fees. When we do a rate study, one of the, there's three things we want, or four things we really want to look at. One is first, the financial stability of the utility is how much revenue we need to collect on an annual basis to pay for operating costs, pay for CIP needs, meet revenue reserve targets, and coverage ratio. The second is proportionality. That's called cost of service. That's how we allocate the costs. We do that for a couple of reasons. One of the main reasons is Prop 218. It's a legal requirement. We need to make sure we do the proportionality. The other one is that we make sure that the rate is a fee for service and not a tax, because each person pays its fair share, then it's not a tax, it's a fee for service. The next one is we design a rate structure that achieves those goals that we talked about. How do we collect that? What's the right rate structure for our community that reflects the values? Of course, throughout the whole process, we want to make sure these rates comply with the legal frameworks with rate development. That's Prop 218 and Prop 26. So how do we do a rate study? These are the four steps that we do. The first step is we ask ourselves, what are the goals and policy objectives? That's what we're doing today. The second step, as I mentioned, is the financial plan. That's sort of how much revenue we need to make sure we collect to meet our operating costs, our CIP needs. We may look at debt issuance. At our next meeting, when I meet with you, we'll be talking about that. The third step is the cost of service, where we allocate the costs, proportionality. And the last, we get into the Prop 218 requirements. That's where we do the noticing. That's where we develop the administrative record. That's the legal defense for your rate study so that hopefully you never get sued. But if you do get sued, that's your defense ability. That shows the proportionality. It meets the Prop 218 requirement. So when designing rates, it's always a balancing act. Unfortunately, there isn't a silver bullet out there. It's always a balance. And that's with anything you've dealt with today in today's meeting. It's a policy. It's how do we get to that spot and that tug? So through the pricing objective, we asked you for water. We went through these different objectives, which is reducing total water use, infrastructure resiliency, outdoor water use, maintain revenue stability, drought management tool, cost effectiveness, ease to implement, enhance customer understanding. You provided us that. I greatly appreciate you being very diligent and responsive in your response. I actually summarized that. The top three that you determined is infrastructure resiliency, enhancing customer understanding, and maintaining revenue stability to ensure financial sufficiency. So those are the three policies for water. For sewer, we did the same exercise where we looked at these objectives, and we asked you to rank them, which is infrastructure resiliency, maintain revenue stability, cost effectiveness, ease to implement, customer understanding. And then should we consider household size when doing the sewer rate for residential? We got these three top, which are very similar to water, slightly different order, but the same theme is occurring, which is revenue stability, infrastructure resiliency, and enhancing customer understanding. So we did the last one, which is electricity. With electricity, we asked ourselves, should we have a rate structure that encourages reducing water use, encourages electrification, the opposite, smooth out the electrical demand curve, as we know that's around six to nine, have a fixed cost for solar users, because there's a standby for them when the solar, when the solar system, if something goes down with the solar system, and infrastructure resiliency. Very similar again in the sense that the top three with infrastructure resiliency, but we do are suggesting to have some kind of fixed cost for solar users and smooth out the electrical demand curve. So I want to take a pause here just to reaffirm those objectives. And if there's any guidance or anything there that we need to take into account, then I'll go into the next steps and the schedule.
Just curious, we all ranked them individually. Was it a wide variety, or were we anywhere close to each other, or was it completely off?
So I do this quite a bit, as I mentioned, and I would say you're very, you're close. Relative to, yeah. Yeah, I didn't think.
See, we're more alike than we are different.
This is also true.
Yeah, but we were also threatened from the voice from above to get it done very quickly.
Okay, so next steps, let's interrupt me if I'm going to proceed on. Next step is to use these objectives in our rate study. We are in the midst of developing the financial model and looking at the revenue needs and looking at capital, operating, debt issuance. Our schedule is aggressive, where we're looking at today's workshop, which is today, May 1st, which is the policy objective. June 5th, I'll be back here with the financial plan presentation and showing you the scenarios with that. Then we'll go over rate options, get your input on that, and then we go through recommendations. So, and then we recommend what we're doing. And then we go into what we call the Prop 218 framework, where we develop the report. You will receive the reports, a procedural requirement. City council will authorize the Prop 218 notice. That'll be on October 2nd. There's a 45-day window that's needed. So the rate hearing would be on November 20th, which is more than 45 days. Second reading would be on December 4th, and then the rates would be implemented January 1st.
Any questions? I have a comment. I get bills every, like I get your water bill, right? And then I get the electric bill, and then the gas bill. Just once, I'd like to open up a bill and not feel like a common criminal. Like, I look at it, and you've throttled through nine sectors or whatever they call those things, and I'm in Sector 14, and I'm paying $4 million a unit. Can we just get rid of all that nonsense? Can it just be a flat rate? And can California get its act together and not do this nonsense?
Mayor, I'm going to answer it maybe first before someone else does, but the entire structure is tailored towards conservation. So you could go to a flat rate, but it is designed to encourage conservation.
You know, like.
That could be a council.
How about we use all the water in the world? We got an ocean next door. Like, when do we give up on it? Because it gets worse by the year. And I sit in the basement, and I'm going through these bills, and I feel like at some point, I need to surrender to authorities. So, and you're going to recommend that, right? You're going to say, hey, we need to conserve more water.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a policy.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's why I'm talking about it. This is my department.
Correct.
I'm not operations, I'm policy.
Correct.
I'm just saying, for the love of God and his work, the common man's tired of the guilt trips. You know what I mean? You don't know what I mean.
Can I add, though, that if you based it on something other than the cost of providing the product and service, you would then be talking about a tax? So you're really arguing for taxes?
I'm just saying, what are they doing in Kansas? Like, do they do that to the citizens there? Do they get throttled? Or is it just a California thing?
So you have a water budget rate structure that has inclining tiers that takes into account lot sizes. We could change that on the water side if you wanted to. There are some benefits of having that rate structure. And again, it's a pro and con. This is a policy.
I'm just saying, as a father, like, there's days I walk up and look at my kids, like, did you need to take a shower today? Do you know what many units that was? So, I'm just, I know it's not you. I know it's not the city. It's just, it's the state. I wish they would stop. I feel guilty. I walk around, I just feel like a beaten man, you know, because I pay utility bills. So I went off on a tangent, sorry. I'm just frustrated with all of this. It's getting late.
Have you ever, have you ever felt like what your dad used to say? I do all the time, when I'm yelling about lights on in rooms that aren't, that nobody's in there, and these shoes aren't going to walk themselves down the hall.
Little bastards, yeah. I mean, it's just, anyhow, it's getting late, and I just needed to talk it out for a little bit, so, thank you. Got it off my chest.
I'm good, okay?
I'm glad you feel that.
Can keep going. Well, thanks for coming. Lost my place. Trying to light up buildings, how many units that's going to go through?
LEDs, Tom.
I know. Okay, well, there's that. I'm sure that'll make YouTube. Legislative matters, boards and commissions, the library did nothing. Well, they did do stuff. But, yeah. That'll make YouTube.
Well, and the library is doing their strategic plan. We have all kinds of fun stuff coming up at the library.
All right, there you go.
See? Abbreviated.
Planning and Housing Commission's got nothing going on. Parks and Recreation Commission's got nothing going on.
A lot going on.
Don't narc me out to him, Wes. Regional meetings, report, update from Councilmember Wes Speake on the Board of Directors of the Western Riverside County Regional Wastewater Authority.
Say that three times fast.
Right?
Yeah, it's a good one. We, let's see, it was a pretty quick meeting. We just talked about a few things. We had three actions. One, we awarded a contract to DUDIC engineers to do some design or redesign work on the solar dryer conveyor system. We authorized a purchase order for a new centrifuge, pretty cool stuff. And then adoption of our fiscal budget. There was a lot of discussion about percentages and all kinds of fun things, and things that we were going to buy and not buy. And we have a new operator, a new, what's his title? Is he the?
Chief Plant Operator, Brian.
Chief Plant Operator. All kinds of great ideas. In fact, he's going to save us $500,000 in chemical expenses, just because he's a smart guy and has lots of ideas, and I think he's just getting started, so I'm excited to see that. We heard updates on our recycle water program. We're most likely going to be selling water to another agency, recycle water, which is a good thing. Recycle water is worth money, and I'm glad that we're going to be selling that, and we've invested in it to do so. And that was all the big things. We went over capital projects, but not going to do that today. All in all, things are going well.
All right, thank you, Wes. Up next is Vice Mayor Steiner. He's going to talk about the RTA, and now every other day, it's free to ride on the bus.
Yep, I'm going to abbreviate mine, too. Ridership was up again, so that's good. There's going to be a service change on May 12th. If you want to find out what that is, go to riversitetransit.com. RTA held a hiring event just a few days ago at the Lake Community Center in Lake Elsinore. They had 34 applications turned in for people wanting jobs with RTA. And Jacob, they're going to be approaching us about holding a event here in Corona in the near future. As a reminder, Free Ride Fridays continue through June 28th on all local commuter link and Go Micro buses. Additionally, starting on June 1st, RTA is offering 25-cent rides all summer long on all fixed routes and Go Micro. Starting July 1st, 2024, youth will ride for free for one year because of a state grant. And finally, we ratified a contract with the ATU Union Local 1277, that's the employees at RTA. We ensured that they are, they remain competitively paid and that we can retain and recruit. That completes my update.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Joe, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I've heard over and over again that RTA is always looking for people, but RTA's never come to our place. We have people, and we're training people to work on equipment, and we never hear from them. You know, we have plenty of employers that we interact with, and we have a whole apprenticeship program, you know, as far as techs and mechanics and, you know, people in the repair trades. We never hear from them. So you might want to have them pop on by RCC. We're not that far away.
That's why they want to do an event in Corona.
Well, yeah, but we're in Riverside. The main campus is where we do the.
Oh, go to Riverside?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were talking about we Corona, not we Riverside.
No, no.
Oh.
No.
That's a good point. I'll mention it to the CEO.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Just want to apologize. My mother says to not refer to her grandchildren as little bastards. I apologize, Mom, and I'm sure I'll hear it from my wife when I get home. All right. City attorneys' reports and comments. Dean, got anything? Smart man, Mr. Ellis?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Smart man. City council members, Tony?
Just one. Yesterday, I got to take Councilmember Steiner and our city manager, Jacob Ellis, to Claros in Upland. And they became honorary Italians for the day. And I think that all of, I was already excited, but I think we now have a couple more excited council members and a city manager that's excited for Claros to come. They've got a great floor plan that they're submitting, and they're well on their way. Their plan is to open before Christmas. That would be lovely. And so I'm very excited about that.
I lost a bet to Tony. I have to take him to Claros now, buy him lunch. Wesley?
Nothing, just headed to SCAG tomorrow for their meeting, and I'll, can't wait. I'll keep you on the edge of your seat the next meeting to tell you all about it.
Riveting.
Yep.
Jim? Jackie?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I got all sorts of stuff, but night's still young, right? I'll go fast. The Corona Heritage Park has some holes in their asphalt and all American, in their paving, and All American Asphalt has graciously and kindly gone, or will go this week and repair it. And I just wanted to give them a shout out. It's very nice of them to do so. I want to say thank you to Angela Nieto. She made the ribbon for the Corona Norco School District's art show. And if you didn't see it, there were just hundreds and hundreds of people there. It was packed. And the school district's just doing good, and we held it at the Circle City Center. If you're not aware by now, the Corona High School baseball team is pretty much the national champions, and there is a big party for them, and those guys went later than the council meeting. There was the Day of the Child last week. It was really great, really awesome. It made the newspaper. I didn't cry this year, probably because I was late. And, yeah, I'm going to take this into adjournment. Yesterday, Vice Mayor Steiner and I had the opportunity to go to the Masonry Lodge, Masonry Lodge. Yesterday, Vice Mayor Steiner and I had the opportunity to go to the Masonry Lodge. Masonic Lodge. And what they do is they give out scholarships to kids in need. And if you ever go to one of these meetings, you will, I cried. And the hardest one for me to weather was there was a student that got a $300 scholarship. She has a 4.0 GPA. She's been accepted to Cal Baptist, where she's going to get a degree in radiology. But she's doing all of that, and she's living in a car with her mother. And a few weeks ago, the car was stolen, and it's just, these guys are getting knocked down at every turn. And as the meeting concluded, I watched the Corona High School auto shop teacher walk over to her and basically said, I'll get you a car, right? And I watched Supervisor Spiegel walk over to her and wanted to help. And then I got to meet, the mom's name is Ruby. I got to meet with her today. And after talking to Karen Roper, the city's going to go to great lengths to help as well. So we're working to set that up. And I wish I would have written the name of her daughter down, and I've forgotten it. But I would like to close this meeting in the name of Ruby and her 4.0 daughter. And with that, we are closed.